Like mitigate to the standard.
Yeah. Do you see how I have it like stuff? I tried to save it that concept, but I just don't. Which I've stated that concept, but I just don't. It seems like it's gonna even more questions to say something about how they're going to evaluate. It seems like it's gonna even more questions to say something about how they're going to evaluate.
Hello? Hello?
Like the standards. Like the standards. Is what it is. So the one thing. Is what it is. So the one thing.
Hello? Hello?
Remind me. Remind me.
Yeah, they're lighting up. Yeah, they're lighting up.
The one I actually, I think that the goal was to talk about it in the application material so that the applicant knows that. The one I actually, I think that the goal was to talk about it in the application material so that the applicant knows that. Their application materials could either show no impacts or could show impacts, but they're mitigated. Their application materials could either show no impacts or could show impacts, but they're mitigated. But talking about it in the standards. But talking about it in the standards. Oh, they're. Oh, they're. It's transcribing me. Transcripting me. Can you guys delete the transcript? Can you guys delete the transcript? Um. Um.
Uh. Uh. We don't have transcript turned on. We don't have transcript turned on.
Um, somebody else does. Um, somebody else does.
Well, we've started recording for now. Well, we've started recording for now.
Yeah, I guess I thought it was muted. Yeah, I guess I thought it was muted. Oh, is it closed? Oh, is it closed?
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was the close connection. Yeah, that was, yeah, that was the close connection.
Can you still go ahead and mute me though? Can you still go ahead and mute me though?
Yes. Yes.
Sorry. Sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Just wanted to. Just wanted to.
Wood Hill, but okay, here we are. When you're ready. Like you're ready. Okay. All right, welcome to the Thursday, June 26, 2025, meeting of the San Miguel County Planning Commission. Thanks to all of y'all for being in here. We have, looks like a little quorum here. Who's online?
Uh, nobody's online. Uh, Robin and Matt are not able to be here today.
Hey, here we are, the big four. All right, first item of business is having called to order at nine thirty-three. Is the approval of minutes and planning commission and staff comments. So what did y'all think of the minutes?
I'm going to approve May twenty twenty-five minutes.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. To ask anybody. So. My or Nate?
Hi.
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 Okay, it wouldn't be quick when we want to be. Plank Commission, Plank Staff, what you got?
Um, so first of all, we will not have a July meeting. Um, we have not had any applications submitted and we're not ready with any other items for that date. However, um, that week, uh, the housing needs assessment, uh, presentation will be on Monday, July eleventh. It will be via Zoom and, uh, uh, it was decided that the best approach with the housing needs assessment was to have a big, single presentation for um, all of the, uh, various bodies, um, you know, town of Tyrride, Mountain Village County. Um, and, uh, so that is your invitation there, um, to attend. And of course, uh, it will be recorded if you're not able, um, to watch that. Um, the housing needs assessment is currently online. I sent the press release to you guys and at the very bottom is the link. Um, so hopefully you'll get a chance to review that. Um. Uh, land use code, uh, online has finally been updated. Um, so it is, it is current. Um, it has, you know, every, you know, solar and driveways and all the other things that we've done in the last uh, eight or nine months. Um. In terms of natural resources, um, as we move along with mining, we're also, uh, uh, Tori's given me a draft on logging. Um, so, uh, my, I need to get that reviewed and, uh, and to you. Um, and, uh, and then at that point, we'll, once we, you know, we know when we're going to have a draft ready for uh, public review, um, we'll get that out and we'll make sure that we have our twenty-one day uh, review period before a work session with, uh, you and the planning, uh, the board accounting commissioners. Um, so that seems to work pretty well to do it that way. So no idea when exactly that will be. Um, but, uh, that's the, that's the next thing that we can think of. Um, John or Nicola, anything I can, I'm missing?
Did you say February eleventh?
July eleventh.
Seven. July.
July. July seventh, excuse me. Yes. Uh, one o'clock.
And that'll be probably two, three, five hours. Do you have any sense?
I'd, I'd expect, you know, at least a couple hours. Um, you know, they'll do a presentation and there'll probably be a lot of questions from all the various electeds that will be in the room.
And should, do you want us in the room or should we just go Zoom?
Just go Zoom. I'm not even sure that we'll, we'll have a room for it. Um, the only room that's big enough to accommodate a lot of people is Mountain Village Council Chambers. Um, so, yeah, it's a Zoom thing. But yeah, July seventh, not Friday, the eleventh.
And then can you say again, when you thought we would see the, the logging, was that going to be draft out for review in August? So we probably won't see it for a couple of months?
Um, I don't know right now. Um, we've, it's a matter of, uh, me doing my review and then we'll have a, we usually have a little back and forth before we get it out for, uh, the public release. And then that, when we release to the public, that's generally a month before the target meeting. And, uh, so at some point here, I'll be coming to you guys and asking about availability. Um, and also trying to find out, uh, when the county commissioners are available as well.
And we don't see it before the public, right? We see it with the public?
Um. So, so yeah, we, we issue it for public review. Um, and, you know, first, um, so that everybody has a chance to look at it um, and be prepared to come to the work session with, um, uh, with, uh, questions and what have you.
Okay.
So.
Anything else? Any questions, guys?
What?
Okay. Well, I guess I'm not going to miss a meeting after all. Yeah. All right, um, well, then the next first item of business is a land use code amendment review and consideration. We've had, uh, several conversations about this as Kay will outline and, uh, today we're looking to see what further changes might be needed, if any. So, okay, it's all yours.
Okay, um, so good morning. Um, we are considering a land use code amendment for mining regulations. Um, you know, as evidenced by the, uh, photo of the Smuggler Union Mine that I threw in there. Um, you know, San Miguel County has a very long history, uh, and, uh, varied history of mining. Um. By way of background, uh, in twenty nineteen, the county commissioners requested natural resource regulations be updated and also asked that mining activities be subject to a two-step review. So for the latter part of that, we did have a fairly immediate code amendment. But, um, you know, because of other time demands and what have you, um, you know, it's been a little bit slower for us to uh, get to the mining part. Um, as, as a significant, uh, uh, update. Um, we did begin in twenty twenty-three, um, on our land use code update for natural resources. And in addition to mining, um, that it, you know, the first part was solar, uh, which is, you know, complete. Um, and then, uh, upcoming will be logging, oil and gas. And, uh, we've now added in geothermal, um, because we do, uh, see that as the next coming thing. Uh, but in October twenty twenty-three, we did have a community open house where we asked people about, um, uh, natural resources in general, but, uh, you know, mining and solar in specific. Um, and that did help inform us, uh, as we came into this process. In terms of applications, um, in twenty twenty-one, we did do, uh, review the borough mine reclamation with, uh, uh, DOE's legacy management. Um, and between twenty twenty-two and twenty-four, we had seven mining exploration applications. Um, and we do expect to see some more. Um, uh, I'm not sure about if it'll be this summer. Um, but, uh, we do have more people out there looking. Um, one thing that I didn't put on here, uh, the Sunday Mines Complex is going back into operation. Um, and, uh, they had been under cessation, um, and are now coming back online. So there is definitely activity out there. Um, also in twenty twenty-four, we adopted a land use code amendment for mining hazards. And this is for how to deal with development on properties that have mining remnants. So not so much, um, you know, it's not necessarily where they're doing, uh, any sort of reclamation or remediation, but they want to develop properties like with houses and what have you, when there is in fact mining, you know, history. And, um, it's kind of modeled on what was in the high country area zone, um, already. And, uh, and then section six dash one, uh, general was adopted along with our solar regulations. This is a whole new chapter and, uh, so that section six dash one applies to all natural resource topics. And then, uh, you know, solar's six dash two, and then mining will be six dash three. Our current regulations are contained in section five dash sixteen of the land use code. Um, and there's, it's really brief, um, it's only about a page, um, with five, uh, subsections in there. And I want to highlight the mitigation of impacts. This is the entirety of mitigation of impacts. All on and onsite and offsite impacts shall be adequately mitigated to protect the health, safety and welfare of persons in San Miguel County and to protect the integrity and appearance of the natural environment. Consideration should be given to site-specific environmental assessments and mitigation plans approved by the appropriate federal agencies and/or the Colorado Division of Minerals and Geology and/or the Colorado Department of Health. However, compliance with such plans as well as additional mitigation may be required by the county as part of the special use permit review process. Such mitigation may include, but is not limited to revegetation, dust control, noise control, visual screening, limitations in hours of operation, truck haul routes and traffic volumes. So, very broad, but, uh, also not very specific. Um, and, uh, you know, you can kind of see where, uh, you know, using this, um, really doesn't get to all the many questions that, uh, everybody always has on these projects.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just, I'll just point out the, the, we, when we were looking at this and thinking of and hearing from concerns from the county, um, it seems like this is an issue of transparency for not only the decision makers, but also for an applicant who doesn't know what's expected of them when they're applying for a permit because it's so open-ended. So part of the goal of these regulations is to provide more transparency for everyone involved, for the public, the decision maker and, um, the applicant as well, what's involved in an application and what's involved in the, um, the standards um, that the, the decision maker will be using.
Okay, and for the record, you are?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, I'm Tori Jarvis. I'm, uh, um, with the law firm Sullivan Green, C V Jarvis, and I'm, um, the consultant, um, hired to help with, um, drafting these regulations. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, just for the record, has the CMA ever sued us on the basis that this is too vague or unenforceable?
The best by knowledge, nobody has, there's been no litigation on, on this. But there also hasn't been a lot of activity until the last couple of years. Uh, there was a lot of activity, years passed, and then there was a law.
Do you know when that was put into the code?
I don't know exactly, um, but, um, you know, our current version, our current code was adopted in nineteen ninety. But we have land use code, um, stuff that goes all the way back, um, into the seventies. Um, and, uh, so yeah, I don't know exactly when this section was added in or this version. Um, but there's definitely been something in the code and, you know, barring having this section, um, or rather, in addition to this section, there's also the, uh, general special use permit criteria, which you know are quite broad as well because they have to fit, you know, a myriad of situations. So, um, in our regulatory approach, our intent is to mitigate the impacts of the proposed activity. Um, and so that's why throughout we ask, how are you mitigating this impact? Um, and, uh, the emphasis is on impacts to the county that are not otherwise addressed or mitigated by state and federal permits. Um, the new regulations are intended to provide increased transparency and clarity for everyone. Um, an applicant for mining will be required to provide reports, plans and studies that analyze impacts of the project and to explain in the application materials how the applicant will mitigate those impacts. Application requirements may be waived or modified based on the scope and expected impacts of the proposed activity. And in this regard, a mining operation could be very small or it could be very large. Um, and in some cases, we can look at, uh, you know, the proposal and say, we reason, at the time of the pre-application meeting, um, and in discussion with the applicant staff can see that, um, you know, a certain issue is not going to be, um, arising um, with that proposal and we can then waive it. Um, materials prepared for federal and state permits may be submitted in order to avoid preparation of duplicate studies and reports. I mean, I could see somebody in doing their narrative, using our application material list and our review criteria list and going down and saying, um, uh, this item is in the, uh, DRMS permit, this item on this, at this section. This item is in the BLM permit at this section. Um, yeah, or in the NEPA report at this section. Um, and, uh, you know, just a simple cross-reference of where to find everything. Um, and, uh, will, you know, prevent duplication. Um, and, uh, uh, and then, um, you know, likewise on the review standards, um, they can, you know, say, this is addressed in this document at this page or section. Um, and then just, um, you know, a reminder, as with any special use permit, conditions may be included that are based on the needs of referral agencies. Um, and, uh, you know, we do have a number of agencies that we coordinate with, including the state and federal, um, entities.
Is that, can I say a few more things on the?
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, that's exactly right. The regulatory process. So we, we've had, um, some, some questions, um, some phone calls in the last week about this regulatory approach. Um, and so I wanted to, um, if you'll bear with me, I wanted to talk a little, spend a little bit more time talking about that because, um, it's become clear to us that there's been some confusion about the way these, these things like might operate and the intent behind, um, the way that we've structured these regulations. So, um, you know, this is more for members of the public, folks who are in the room. Hopefully this provides you with a little bit more, um, background understanding of the structure of the regulations. So, um, just building off of what Kay talked about, um, the application materials, they're, they match perfectly with a standard. And so your, your, the burden, I guess I'll start with this, the burden, the idea is that the burden is on the applicant to demonstrate to the county, um, that there aren't any impacts of the project. Um, and we actually, we think it will be helpful for everyone to add in a sentence that makes that much clearer. The burden is on the applicant. Why do we think that's important? Because members of the industry are the ones that know the best ways to mitigate impacts of the proposed activity. The county does not want to stand in the place of industry and tell anyone prescriptively, um, you can do this, you can't do that. It would be inefficient for everybody because technologies change and your regulations would instantly be out of date. And so by asking the applicant to demonstrate either that there's no impacts or that they're able to mitigate impacts, that's putting that burden on the applicant is the best way to, um, to have the expert do the work, basically. Um, so anyway, relationship between the application materials and the standards, they connect to each other. So your application, um, materials, um, you are show, you're demonstrating how you meet a specific standard that correlates with it. Um, so the, the impact-based regulations, the structure is that you first ask for baseline information. What's the situation on the site and in the surrounding area that may be impacted by the project? So you ask, you, the applicant would describe baseline information and then they would describe if there are any predicted impacts of a project. And so those are the first two pieces of each resource category. Um, something that, that maybe wasn't obvious to everyone and we had assumed too much is that the applicant can also demonstrate that there's no impacts in a particular resource. There may be no impacts to wildlife. There may be no noise impacts, just giving examples. If you demonstrate in your application that there are no noise impacts, there's no need to go on to the next step, which is demonstrating that you can mitigate the impacts. So if you show baseline and that there's no impacts of a project, that's where you stop for each resource, um, assessment or, um, impact assessment. Um, if there are impacts that are predicted to a particular resource, that's when you would go through the mitigation plan and demonstrate how you're mitigating impacts to, to show that there's no adverse impacts any longer from the project. So that was a key piece that I think had been missing in the conversation. You don't always have to do a mitigation plan if there's no impacts to mitigate. So that's an important point. Again, why do we do it this way? Because you all are, the, the industry's in the best place to demonstrate to us whether there's going to be impacts to a particular resource area. So, um, when we were thinking about this, there's basically three ways that an applicant can prove at a hearing that a mine will not cause degradation, significant degradation. So you can demonstrate that there's no impacts that would occur from the project. You can demonstrate that the, there are impacts, but they're going to be mitigated through a well-done mitigation plan as part of the impact assessment, as part of the application. You may also use a DRMS requirement that's, that demonstrates that you have satisfied the relevant standard. So that's what Kay's talking about, where the, the application and the requirements in the DRMS permit may be, may be able to demonstrate that you've satisfied the county requirements, and that's definitely the intent. And then Kay mentioned that, um, if, uh, if there's application materials that just do not pertain to the particular project, you are able, the county's able to waive those requirements. Um, what the, what we have understood the goal was in balancing here is to create an application process for many different types and scales of mining. Not to have ten different permit processes, but one permit that allows off-ramps so that the, these permits or this permit system can be scaled to different sized projects by waiving materials. And we'll talk a little bit more about other ideas we have to make that even clearer, um, in the future as well. But I just, hopefully that helps some folks.
Thank you. Um. So, um, you know, as we've already said, there are a number of federal and state permits that, uh, are always involved with mining. Um, and in addition to projects on private and state lands, these regulations apply to private activity on federal land because the regulations are focused on mitigating the impacts of the activity, not on dictating whether or not mining may occur on federal land. Um, there, the regulations are intended to complement and not conflict with federal and state regulations. Um, and we recognize that federal and state regulations may preempt San Miguel County's regulations. Um, somebody needs to mute. Somebody needs to mute. Got it? Thank you. The Colorado Division of Reclamation, Mining and Safety, or DRMS, is the primary permitting authority for mining in the state. And in May, we did have a presentation from DRMS on how their permitting and bonding process works that was very helpful and informative. Some mining activities may be on private land. And in those cases, federal permits might be needed. A state permit from DRMS most likely will be needed. You know, some of these most commonly on private land are gravel. But, you know, people that own their own mineral rights, you know, that isn't a federal mineral right, might still be, you know, looking at this. And then, as we've mentioned, application materials prepared for federal and state agencies, actually, I say here, may be accepted, it will be accepted. You know, we had a gravel pit application a couple of months ago where they submitted their federal and state paperwork and it made the application very understandable and readable. So we've already had some testing on this. So in our mining activities, we've basically got it in three different categories. We've got exploration, which is what we've been seeing the most of. We've got reclamation not associated with a mining operation or exploration. For example, that could be, you know, your historic and legacy mine sites. And then we have mining operations and this includes mining, processing, and remediation, reclamation directly associated with that mining permit. So within our draft regulations, as mentioned before, it's part of Article Six, which will contain the other natural resources topics and replacing Section 516 in its entirety. It lists the zone districts where mining may be permitted. So deleting it, mining as a listed use out of the individual zone districts, putting them all over here in the new, new section. It contains all application requirements according to the type of activity and it contains all review standards according to the type of activity and those align. Each application requirement corresponds to a specific review standard. We have limited cross-references to other sections of the code to avoid errors and omissions. So for example, instead of referring back to the wetlands section, we've actually put wetlands into these regulations. The one notable area where it does refer to the code is for the dark sky compliance. So definitions are contained in Section 6301K. And there are a number of definitions in, in the draft in, in addition to some definitions that are in Article Seven, which apply to the entire. But I'm going to highlight the, just a few. Exploration is the act of searching for or investigating a mineral or a construction material deposit. Exploration includes, but is not limited to sinking shafts, tunneling, trenching, drilling, core and bore holes, and digging pits or cuts and other works for the purpose of extracting samples prior to commencement of development or extraction operations and the building, building of roads, accessways, and other facilities related to such work. And then there's some clarifying language beyond that. Mining operation is the activities associated with development, production, and/or extraction of a mineral from its natural occurrences or within, or within refuse. And so, you know, or the activities associated with development, production, and/or extraction of construction material from its natural occurrences. So we separate out between mineral mining operation and construction material mining operation. And the area within the county where the mineral mining operation or the construction material mining operation will be conducted. And again, there's some qualifying and clarifying information below that. And both definitions note activities that are accepted. You know, for example, there's recreational prospecting where people are using, you know, they're basically going out and panning or using small sluices and stuff like that. Generally exempt. Reclamation is the employment of procedures during and after a mining operation pursuant to a DRMS reclamation plan or during and after exploration pursuant to DRMS approval of a notice of intent to conduct exploration that are reasonably designed to minimize as much as practicable the disruption from the mining operation or exploration and that provide for the establishment of plant cover stabilization of soil, the protection of water resources, or other measures appropriate to the subsequent beneficial use of areas impacted by the mining operation or exploration. And then the other side of it is restoration. The employment of procedures designed and conducted pursuant to a county permit for areas outside the boundaries of an approved DRMS reclamation plan to minimize as much as practicable the disruption from a mining operation, exploration, or reclamation-only operations and to provide for the establishment of plant cover stabilization of soil, the protection of water resources, or other measures appropriate to the subsequent beneficial use of such affected lands. Restoration does not include activities or geographic areas that are subject to a DRMS reclamation and/or applicable reclamation requirements in federal permits. So we really tried to separate out exact, you know, and, you know, compartmentalize these different activities.
So as a, for instance, we would not apply restoration expectations to a, say, an exploratory permit that would be, that would impact anything going on within the envelope of whatever dreams are approved.
So, you know, we would definitely be looking at it. And, but that comes under reclamation, so it's procedures during and after an operation or exploration pursuant to the DRMS notice of intent. And, you know, for within the site, DRMS is going to hold the bond and they're going to be the ones responsible for ultimately deciding whether or not to release it. But, you know, we've definitely looked at those, looked at the reclamation and, you know, verified whether or not, you know, when some, when they wrap up a project, we verify whether or not they've met all of our conditions. And then DRMS is also looking at to verify whether or not it meets their conditions.
And, and just to add on, that, that's one, that's, it's very clear that the, the state has the exclusive authority to regulate reclamation of a mine site. The county's not doing that and, and that is, that's very clear that you would be preempted from doing that. So there's areas primarily, it's roads really primarily. Yeah, county roads. So outside of the DRMS permit is what you can regulate there. And likewise, bonding, you cannot bond for anything on the DRMS site.
Right, so the, so dreams would be responsible for adequate reclamation plan for new roads cut within the site and the reclamation of those and the county's. The county's activity would start at the end of the, of the footprint where it hits the county road.
Depends on how DRMS writes the permit. There could be internal roads that aren't part of the DRMS permit that we would then be looking at if they needed to be reclaimed. So the review processes, processes, mining operations are all two-step review, meaning it goes to the planning commission for a recommendation and then to the board of county commissioners for final decision. Exploration is two-step review, except for minor exploration, which is defined within the draft. And that is one-step review to the planning commission. Reclamation-only operations are a one-step review, recognizing that there's federal and state permitting requirements. And then if it's a state or federal reclamation project, say, for example, DOE Legacy Management is doing a reclamation project, they provide an activity notice to us. So we look at it administratively, provide feedback. But, you know, if another, for example, borough mine type project came in, we would, we would get an activity notice. We would probably respond to them saying, here's our conditions about our road usage and any other things that we were, you know, had of concern.
I'll just add that since you all last met this reclamation-only operation concept, the state legislature passed a, a law in this past session, so within this year. And it got signed into law since our last meeting. So I thought it was worth mentioning that reclamation-only permits, the way that they will be administered through the DRMS permitting system is it's actually just requiring notice of these reclamation-only operations, which are defined as five acres or under. So that's the way the state is looking at these now.
Notice to us or notice to them?
To them, yeah.
Okay, so the EPA thing done on the road, the road going into Over a couple of years ago, would that be an example of a restoration, reclamation-only?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the acreage was on that.
Less than five acres then. If it were more, then we bump into the mining.
Yeah, but also if it's a federal agency, it would be the activity notice. Provision.
Yeah, and that was undertaken by EPA.
I mean, we have, we, we understand that there is, and we've, we've dealt with some in other counties, there's an uptick in, which I think there's an interest in having this done, but private reclamation-only permits to turn over the land so that it could be used for another purpose. Which, there's a lot of benefits to that too. But that's really what this reclamation-only operation would be, is private activity to reclaim and reuse.
Saying here that we are very reclamation-forward. I mean, we are trying to support and, and advance those activities with this, with this regulation here. We also want to see them done correctly and done well. So for the, that five acre rule saying that anything bigger than five acres bumps into the mining operations under our regulation, that's not to conclude reclamation, but that's specifically just so that we can say, hey, you're going to have a big impact out there, even if it's a good impact. And so we want to make sure it's done carefully, safely, well, and with respect for the surrounding neighborhood.
And then, just as an aside, CDPHE also has their own program called for voluntary cleanup projects or V cup. And so a property that, where the owner wishes to move forward with, you know, cleaning up, you know, doing reclamation, they can work through CD, work with CDPHE through that process. And again, that kind of falls under the activity notice. And we might have, bring it to you for a one-step review on a private property or it might go through the administrative mining hazards, depending on the type of property and proposal.
I would think a V cup would be exactly what we're talking about here with reclamation-only operations for less than five acres because it's done by the owner, not by the state.
Correct.
So it would absolutely go through the one-step review process. That would be my reading of that. And then for obviously for larger than five acres, it would still go into the mining only, or the mining operations.
Yep, and there's all that, all that language that says that an applicant can submit their application form another agency so they could use their, their CDPHE stuff.
So, as I mentioned before, the zone districts where mining activities may occur are listed in the proposed regulations. It includes the forestry or culture and open, which is the lightest green on this map. I know it's a small map. Rangeland grazing, which is kind of a light brown. Wright's Mesa, which is that darker green in the middle. Wright's Mesa Rural Agriculture, if we happen to have any land rezoned to that. West End, which is all that brown on the left-hand side of the map. And then also the High Country area, which is the light green on the far east end. There is a caveat that in the High Country area, construction material mining is not permitted. And then mining of federal minerals are permitted in all areas regardless of the zoning. And mining of privately owned minerals may be considered in other zone districts on a case-by-case basis. So say, for example, there was an area zoned low-density residential that had viable commercial gravel resources, we could conceivably see a request to mine those.
Kay, sorry to keep interrupting, but can you speak to, for example, I think it was the Sheep Mountain was saying, anyway, one of the commenters was saying, why can't we just say no mining in the High Country zone? Can you speak to why we can't say that and why we're not trying to say that?
So mining, you know, mineral rights are a property right. And to flat-out prohibit the ability of mineral rights owners to access their minerals would be, would most likely constitute a takings.
May, but, yeah, and I, I mean, the, 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 the mining statutes talk about land use, you know, local land use regulations apply to mining. So to that extent, there, you, you are authorized, we think, to, to zone in or out mining of different zones.
We can say enough construction materials.
Yes, yeah, and I, I mean, I, I do think that, I do think you need to have a rationale for why the High Country would be excluded. You could say that. The other thing, I think that the other reason why we think it's better to default to allowing mining in more zones, but have these impact-based regulations that basically if it's happening, there's no adverse impact to every resource you could think of. So we think that's a better way to balance, like, allowing folks to use their property rights, but ensuring there's no adverse impact. So that's part of why we structured it the way we did. I don't think, I don't think that you're, there's nothing that prohibits you from choosing zones that you think is most appropriate to zone in.
And then you've also explained to me that many of the mineral rights held in the High Country zone are federal mining permit, or federal mining.
That's a good point too.
Leases are federal mining rights.
Yeah, there's, there's a, you know, number of, you know, many, many mining claims up there. The majority of them are held by the Forest Service. Some of them are, or a significant number are also held by Newmont Mining or Idorado. And then there's some additional ones that are held by, you know, individuals and entities. TSG owns mining claims. And regarding no gravel in the High Country, I wasn't here when that was adopted, but I would guess that a lot of it has to do with the transportation issue because that, that district emphasizes no new roads. And you can imagine the type of roads that would have to be built to accommodate today's haul trucks. So I think that was probably a significant concern.
Most of our High Country National Forest family.
Significant part of it.
Yeah, yeah, so that, that is another good point, Hallie, is that, you know, if most of the mining is going to be on federal lands, on federal lands, you, local governments may not zone what kind of activities may happen on federal lands. You may regulate the impacts of private activity on federal lands. So that's a good point too. If the High Country, most of that mining activity would be occurring on federal land, then it doesn't really matter whether you've zoned it in or not. It could still occur.
That's where I expected this interview to go with. We could say, sure, no mining in the High Country, but that doesn't actually solve any issue that we're actually concerned with. We're concerned with mitigating impacts, not with deregulating mining. The best can say, yes, you can mine here, but they're not concerned with saying, no, you can't. We're concerned with saying, let's do it safely.
Yeah, you actually can't say no mining.
And are federal minerals defined definitions someplace as to what constitutes?
Not in our code because that arises from federal regulations, so.
Yeah, we, I would think that you would want to defer to.
At some level, somebody would like to know what they are, I suppose, but the mining community certainly is.
Well, that was another comment we received and I don't want to hijack this presentation, but another comment we received was, there are so many things that aren't defined. Well, a rancher doesn't need you to define what a sow is. Everyone knows in the ranching community what a sow is. So that's how I feel about these mining regulations too. We don't necessarily need to define every single mining term because if you're reading these regulations, you're going to know those terms or know where to find them. every single mining term, because if you're reading these regulations, you're gonna know those terms or know where to find them.
Um, so moving on to application materials and review standards, exploration, reclamation only operations for this, at the second work session, the two activities were combined and moved ahead in the order within this chapter. So it's now section six dash three oh three and six dash three oh four. And then mining operations are section six dash three oh five for application materials and six dash three oh six for review standards. There are a number of right, required plans for mining operations and might also be needed for some, or in some level for exploration or reclamation only. But this is emergency preparedness and response plan, and that is prepared in concert with our emergency manager. Spill prevention, control and countermeasures plan, hazardous materials management plan, restoration plan. And these all become part of the development approval, so they carry for the life of the permit. And they have various levels of requirements for updates as well. So that if this is a mining operation that has a multi-decade life, you know, we're not dealing with something that is no longer useful.
And those plans are typically the most heavily commented by our referral agencies, I would think.
Yes. It's very significant.
And one of the key things that stood out to me on those was not the fact that we're asking for something that's already required by the state and feds. We're being responsive to our local fire jurisdiction who's saying, these exist and we never see them. So can we at least get a chance to look at the comment? And so I think that's an important part about why the county is asking to see those. Not because we don't think you're gonna do an SPCC plan if you are required to do an SPCC plan, it's because our fire department, who is the local emergency responder, needs to know what's being expected of them. And I think that's a big part of why it's in our, in our regulations.
Correct. So the mining operations standards are, they're extensive. You know, it expands greatly on that one paragraph that we have right now. But what it does is it brings up, you know, all of the many, you know, issues and concerns that everybody has had. And, you know, again, going back to things that could be waived. You know, we have blasting here. If the project doesn't include blasting, you know, it'll be a simple, this project does not include blasting. We have housing on here. If it were a project that only employed maybe five people and they're all locals and they all have housing, it's gonna, you know, that's what it's gonna say, you know, we only expect to employ five people and they all have housing. But if you're, you know, starting a mine that will be, you know, with two hundred people, you know, you're gonna hear about our extreme housing shortage here, you know, in a couple of weeks. You know, the question will be then, how, how will you house these workers without displacing existing residents? And so, you know, that, that's a really good example though of, you know, it might be a not applicable or no, no impact. Or it might be major or somewhere in between.
And, and I'll just remind folks again, like, most of these impacts would also be looked at in a special use permit process. Part of the challenge with your regulations was that they're, they're so piecemeal, the existing land use regulations that we set the course a while ago to make standalone natural resource regulations. And, and I think that that, that's been hard for folks because it seems like all these things are just for mining. But just because it's a standalone regulation doesn't mean that it just, you know, you may be used to seeing mining as a special use where many of these things are applied to all sorts of different uses, not just mining.
Yeah.
And I think the county's intent would be to look at this, these impacts for any natural resources and lots of other uses in the county too.
Yeah, yeah, if you look at these, they're, you know, they all have corresponding sections in our, or most of them have corresponding sections in our current code. You know, road, public road and rights away improvement and maintenance, geologic and natural hazards is cut, covered in our ten forty one regs. Flood plains, we have a section on that. We have a section on wetlands. Wildlife is in our ten forty one regs in section five dash four. Vegetation and weed management, you know, a number of these are already in the code. So bringing them into one place rather than, you know, handing over, you know, several hundred pages of regulations that, you know, go beyond that one paragraph. So.
So the attempt is to make sure that it's clearly understood what's required without having to go fish for it.
Correct.
Find out at the S U P level that, oh, you're supposed to give us a lighting plan.
Yeah, and it makes it easier for staff too, because some days it's a challenge for us to remember every section of the code that we need to reference. So.
Well, that was another comment we got was, you know, crosswalks and checklists and stuff like that would be really useful, but that's not what we're doing here today. We're doing the regs. You will deal with implementation, right?
Correct.
Have that sort of thing.
Yeah, yeah, you know, if, if we have a volume of applications that are you know, high enough to justify creating tools like checklists and such, we can do that. You know, right now, we're, yeah, we're not there.
Well, save the CMA's comments because they gave us a really great crosswalk showing how our regs and how DRMS compare. I can thank you guys. I don't know if they're here in the room, but that was an awesome crosswalk because it's actually really useful to know, hey, here's where we need to look to see each thing.
And then for exploration, reclamation only, the number of standards are abbreviated. But this is based on, you know, the issues that we've seen in our recent years experience with, especially exploration, but also some of the reclamation. And so narrowing it down and focusing on what we expect the areas of impact to be. And again, noting this is subject to one step CPC review for minor activities, two step if it's, if it's larger than the minor. And then reclamation only operations, the materials and review standards are the same as exploration. As we already talked about remediation and reclamation associated with mining operations and mineral exploration will be reviewed as part of that permit. And reclamation of mining operations is under the purview of DRMS. If it's reclamation only, that's subject to one step review. And reclamation of old mine sites is typically undertaken by state and fed, federal agencies under an activity permit. We already talked about that quite a bit. Reclamation bonds are held by DRMS. The county may require financial security for impacts outside the DRMS approved permit. Most notably, this comes into play with construction, maintenance and remediation of haul routes. And then section six dash three oh nine talks about the requirements for financial security, so it's the form, but also requiring regular review and updates, so we're not left with an inadequate bond. We've learned our lesson from some past years' decisions where we've kind of been left holding the bag. Some other provisions that we have, we have a six three oh one H, notice of temporary cessation or termination. There is a process through DRMS, but we want to also be notified if, if they're ceasing operations temporarily or permanently. There is a requirement for an annual report. We specify the sort of things that we want in there and our guidance to all applicants doing annual reports, reports for any type of S U P is look at your adopting, the adopting resolution and your conditions and tell us how those are being met. And so again, it's not something that we have a specific checklist for. We could maybe develop something in the future. We just haven't, you know, gotten to that point. And then also we have six three oh one J, transfer of permit. So we want to be notified if there is a change of operator. Because, you know, operations can and do get sold or transferred to other entities and you know, we don't want to be left wondering who exactly is in charge of it and how to get ahold of them. Again, from our lessons learned, we're currently trying to track down the owners of a significant mineral interest in the county. And it's been challenging. So we have some related amendments to the land use code in section three dash one oh one. We clarify that development permits are required in the right, Wright's Mesa and West End Zone Districts. Article three procedures is updated to reference article six. And because, you know, it, I know it lists all these different types of activities. And whether they're administrative, one step, two step, you know, whatever. So just getting those all up to date and consistent. In section five dash three, which is the zone districts, striking mining as permitted uses because it's replaced by section six dash three oh one E. And then section five dash sixteen, mining will be deleted. And that will just become a reserved section. If we need a new section in the code in the future, we can insert it there and reuse it. And then article seven in definitions, taking out the mining related definitions. And then there was also one, I think it might have been development, maybe, I can't remember exactly. There was one term that we needed to make clear that it was, because it was also defined in the mining section. So making it clear that in article seven, it's not mining, and then in article six, it is mining.
Does the system maintain archival copies of codes preaching the civic?
Yes, yeah, the new civic plus that we use, they do track those. We also try to, every time we update the code, save an archival copy. There was a twenty six year period where that wasn't happening. So we have a gap where we have to go back and reconstruct using resolutions, but.
Do you, we have to actually do that?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry to hear that.
Uh huh, so are we. But Nicola did a great job of compiling all the old resolutions and making a spreadsheet that helps us do the research. So for referral and review on this, we've, the draft, the first draft of the regulations were first posted on the website and sent to referral agencies on December twenty third. That comment period on the first draft was open until January twenty second, and we did have our first work session in the middle of that period. The second draft was then published on February seventh with a request for written comments by February twenty eighth. And then in March, we had our second work session. And at that work session, you and the B O C C did ask for a thirty day comment period. Instead of the usual twenty one days. So our third, the current draft was published on May second. And the comment period was actually extended through June ninth, so it was more like thirty eight days. And that was, you know, when we moved this meeting, we were able to add another week on to that. Also during this time, staff and the consultant met with DRMS, B L M, DOE and CMA staff and their representatives. And then staff also met with the County Open Space Commission. So there have been a lot of ongoing conversations and outreach. The work sessions, as I mentioned, were January ninth and March thirteenth. Within those, we had a lot of overview of federal and state mining laws and regulations and their relationship to local regulations. And our really biggest, you know, topics of discussion were definitions, difference between reclamation and remediation and the review process for reclamation only projects and for ex, for exploration activities. Obviously, there were more things that were discussed from that, than that, but those were the really, you know, the, the top items. Public notice for this meeting, the agenda was published in the Telluride Daily Planet and the Norwood Post on June twentieth. Draft regulations have been available online since May second. We issued press releases on May sixth and then updated on May ninth. We did do some social media posts. We may have done some display ads, but my memory's not that good right now. But we typically do display ads in the paper. I think we did when we first published in early May. And then emails were sent to interested parties on May second, then again, updated on May ninth. And that was about a hundred and seventy five people on that list. For referral agencies, this was sent to sixty nine local, state and federal agencies, municipalities and organizations. For this round, we received responses from the San Miguel Watershed Coalition, Colorado Mining Association, Colorado Parks and Wildlife. And then Sheep Mountain Alliance in form and the Great Old Broad for Wilderness submitted a joint letter. And then Department of Energy Legacy Management comments were submitted verbally to staff and the consultant. If you want to refer to comments received for the work sessions, those are contained in the meeting packets for you know, those meetings. You know, we didn't want to make your packet be, you know, eight hundred pages. But that, those resources, those materials are always there, still there. They, they never go away. For the referral agency comments and really, you know, there are the, you know, lengthy and very thoughtful comments from everybody. So I'm gonna paraphrase very briefly. But the San Miguel Watershed Coalition had notes that related state regu, there are related state regulations. They requested more specificity regarding bonds. And they asked that we include requir, requirements regarding climate change. And I think the climate change thing is a bigger umbrella that we need to look at, not just with regard to mining, so. Colorado Mining Association had concerns regarding relation to state regulations. And the effect on the remediation of legacy abandoned uranium mines. And then we did receive yet another comment that came in kind of late, I think, or am I forgetting?
From the Mining Association or from an individual?
Yeah.
From the Mining Association or from an individual?
Oh, I think, I think I'm confusing things with individuals, so. Colorado Parks and Wildlife noted their earlier recommendations had been included, so they had no further comments. Sheep Mountain Alliance in form and the Great Old Broad for Wilderness did request increased setbacks. They support the two step review process and ask for greater restrictions in High Country and Back Country areas. They were using Summit County, Summit County example for back current, the back country. And then, as I mentioned, DOE provided their verbal comments. And with regard to public comments, we did receive one email that was included in the packet and then two additional emails received after the packet was issued. And were added to the online packet on June twenty fifth. And where I got confused on CMA, there was a conversation with them this week, so follow up, but not in writing. And we'll talk about that a little bit. So review standards for land use code amendments are contained in section five dash eighteen oh two. And state land use code amendments may be initiated by the county or by persons who are residents of our own property in San Miguel County, subject to compliance with the following standard. Land use code amendment shall be drafted in a form consistent with the organizational format and style of the code. This was initiated by the Board of County Commissioners and it has been drafted to match the code. And then there's also section one dash four, purposes of the land use code, which includes four oh two, implement policies, four oh three, create common system of administration and regulation, four oh four, simplify the regulatory process, and four oh five, protect health, safety and welfare. And then also we have our land use policies, specifically section two dash three five. Mining and mineral processing operations states, is the policy of the county to permit commencement or ex, expansion of mining and mineral processing operations? mining and mineral processing operations states, is the policy of the county to permit commencement or ex expansion of mining and mineral processing operations only in appropriate areas identified pursuant to the county comprehensive development plan with review as appropriate under land use code section five dash four, that's our, and CRS twenty four sixty five point one to one oh one at S, at SIC, areas and activities of state interest, subject to adequate mitigation of environmental noise, traffic and other impacts of such activities. So we have here, finally, at the end, a sample motion for recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The, it, I am recommending that the amendments include all changes as proposed in the consultant's memo dated June twenty fifth in response to referral agency comments. And I think we have some refinements on that, on the recommendations. And then any other amendments that you would like to be forwarded to the BOCC. So with that, Tori, I think you've got something, so I'm going to stop sharing.
Sure, okay, switching gears a little bit, we're getting more into the details on what Kay just mentioned, which is we provided you all with a memo with some changes recommended in response to all the comments that Kay just mentioned. We have had more conversations and have been, we continue to think about, I don't think any of the conversations were different than what you've seen in your written comments, but we have a couple of additional concepts that we want to talk with you all about. And the goal of them, and I'll share in a minute, but the goal of them is is to continue to find the right balance of regulations that work for and provide off ramps for and on ramps for, I guess, but various intensities of mining. And that seems like a lot of the concerns that we're hearing are for for smaller scale mining. But but genuinely, I think it would be more confusing for everyone to have, you know, more scales of mining. And so the way that we're looking to address that instead is to have additional off ramps. So if the scale of mining is so small that just by, on its face, there's, there's things that don't apply. We're thinking of of ways to accommodate that, to get to a reasonable size application. So anyway, let me get my sharing going. And what I have here is a running list, so I got, I took everything out of the memo format and I have a running list of recommendations for you all to consider, so if you all have recommendations too, we'll just keep this as a running list during the meeting.
That's the idea.
Okay, great, so I'm starting, I put, I put at the top of this list, the ones that aren't in the memo for you all, so they're, they're the new ones. So I'll just, so I have the shortlist that I thought I'd keep adding to, just so we can, you know, have to scroll back and forth to remember everything that we've talked about. But we don't need to start with the shortlist yet, so. So currently in your regulations, you, you have given yourselves the ability to waive, or really Kay has the ability to waive application materials. We had the ability to waive in your, in the review criteria, you have the ability to waive setbacks, but there's no criteria as to how you would make that decision to waive a two hundred foot setback. And the Mining Association pointed it, pointed that out, we think that is problematic. So in your memo, we recommended putting some criteria to how you would make a recommendation on reducing setbacks. During conversations this week, we see value in expanding that concept of waiving standards for two different reasons, and basically it's the same concept as in the setbacks, but that there could be other standards that would be waivable for an applicant. We don't have red lines for this yet because we need to play around with what the process would look like. At what point would an applicant be able to request a waiver of standards? We think it would be appropriate to do it at like the pre-application phase so that they're not developing some application for something that's waived. So there's some practical considerations there, so we didn't work on red lines. But we think that there would be some value in a waiver process for criteria. And the applicant would need to demonstrate that first, that there's no, well, there's two options, basically. So the idea is that the applicant could either demonstrate that there's no economical, technically feasible option available to them to meet the standard. And I think that the setbacks is a good example of that, if a setback would render their project, you know, useless or create this huge burden where or it would, it would bump them out of cost of even doing the project. We would want to be able to waive the standard on there or adjust the standard. And then the second way, and this is getting to the comments that we've heard about smaller scale operations, is that because of the scope, scale or intensity of the proposed, I think conduct isn't quite the right word, but this is just a concept. Because of the, the scope or scale or intensity of the proposed mining operation, that even if the requirement is waived, the applicant would demonstrate that the proposed conduct would be protective of public health, safety, welfare and the environment. So they basically, you wouldn't never waive the standard unless they're giving you an alternative and and explaining upfront why that is a protective alternative.
Not to open a new can of worms, but as we flesh this out, I think that it would make sense to look at some wording that could apply elsewhere in the land use code outside of mining, because there are other waiver positions that probably are just vague, really.
Yeah.
But in keeping with the let's keep everything in one place idea, certainly let's write it for mining.
We'll look at fixing the rest of the code another time.
Yeah.
It's only Thursday.
I don't have to worry about that part either. Do you guys want to talk about these one at a time? You tell me.
Yes, I guess, kind of to play devil's advocate here, you know, one of the CMA's comments was, this is vague and what are the criteria? So for example, no adverse impacts to wildlife. Well, our criteria do have some actual requirements. It's not like you can just say, hey, I need to cut a tree down and it's going to displace a bird. It's an adverse impact. Well, we can mitigate that.
Yeah.
I guess my concern here would be, we say, oh, I can't do my mining operation because I'm within the two hundred foot perimeter from a wetland. Isn't that the goal? We don't want mining operations to impact wetlands, so why would we create a waiver? For example, to allow mining operations within two hundred feet of a wetland? I guess we're in my mind, to some extent, we're creating more vagueness and more ability to be accused of being arbitrary. How would we manage that?
Yeah, so first of all, I do, I don't think it would be arbitrary because you're asking the applicant to explain it. And I do think, I mean, I think it's a good point. I think if you do it early enough in the process, you're pulling, you're pulling these considerations like out of the, the the rest of the application, but wait, let me, I don't remember what else I was going to say about that. Let me think. I had another response and I
It gives you the opportunity to recognize more of uns-technicalities, if I may say so. So for example, and I'll get to this later, but I was really interested about that map that indicated that all of the west end is wetlands. I had no idea. So there's wetlands and then there's wetlands, I guess.
There's jurisdictional wetlands and then there are dry drainages that sometimes flow.
Right, so we'd want to have the ability to recognize that's a dry drainage, this probably isn't an issue. Is the work's going to take place during the dry season, so we'll waive it this time.
And
We already have that.
We're trying to make it more explicit without making it detailed.
We're trying to provide opportunity for earlier in the process, someone not to have to do a full blown. I think the wetlands is probably a tough example. It's hard to think that that entire thing would be. It's just hard to think that they would be able to demonstrate that, but if there's a particular wetland that like would render their whole project, I mean, I think that they would be able to mitigate that. I think that's a tough example.
We waive setbacks when it's appropriate to the location.
Yeah.
We did, we did so routinely, but we know that we can do that.
And I think
Tells us we can do that.
Yeah, and I think the idea of technical infeasibility goes beyond what you just described, like there needs to be some demonstration that there's no other option. And I think wetlands would be hard because there's so many opportunities to mitigate. And I think the setback, that's a tougher one because there's not these opportunities to mitigate a setback, you know, it's not that, it's, it's the only prescriptive standards you all have. And I think that's where prescriptive standards are tough, and that's why we, we default to the impact based standards more.
And you know, every property is different, every project design is different. You know, it's possible to design, you know, a multitude of projects on the same property and have different impacts from each of them. And that's why, you know, we can't be that black and white in, in this. Because we don't know what's going to be presented to us. As, but you know, an example, you know, we have a setback to haul routes. Is that fifty feet? Yeah, fifty foot setback to haul routes, but say there's some extreme terrain that if they go back fifty feet, they're, you know, up a cliff or in a, in a gulch. That would be, you know, something rational to say, you know, because we say, is technically infeasible for me to put my haul route on this cliff without causing extreme geo hazard. And oh, by the way, it's not technically possible for us to get the slopes and the grades to, you know, get haul trucks up and down that. That would be, you know, a good reason to do a waiver.
Yeah, or, I mean, another one I was thinking of is like, we've, we've heard recently about how that that re-mining an existing site may be one of the most common proposals in the county. And if that's the case, like what if that existing mine is within two hundred feet of a residence and the residence waives it and said, we would love for you to come in and do that work? You know, if there's all these things in place, then you may be able to waive that, that requirement, so. Yeah, trying to provide additional flexibility.
Another off ramp.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and doing it sooner in the process is the idea than the application to ensure that if it's a small enough project, or if they have these particular components aren't applicable to them, then they're also not.
Yeah.
Trying to figure out if they need, need to meet the standard.
Yeah, the code does allow the appeal of directors' decisions to the board. So if, you know, the planning director says, no, I will not waive this wetland mitigation plan because they can, you know, it can be appealed to the board.
Can the board appeal?
Call it.
I mean, I, it, no, it's not something that could be a call up. If the board were to appeal it themselves, it's a little awkward.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Just
Yeah.
Understand if it goes
Yeah, I mean, I think the other possibility is feedback, feedback on what the, yeah.
Eric Planning Director to our board.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the, we have this concept, but we don't have a process yet, so we don't know that we would for sure cite to that part of the code, so we could also take your feedback on, you know, pre-application, you know, do you think a call up would be appropriate?
Yeah, so that's in article one of the code, the powers and duties. And where it specifically says that any director's decision can be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. And the BOCC has the authority to call up any one step planning commission review. And then there's another section in there where the director can refer administrative decisions to the BOCC. That really doesn't apply here. But the article one powers and duties of a P, with the appeal that I think that is, you know, definitely relevant and but, you know, we're going to be having a lot of conversation back and forth, trying to get to a point where you know, the applicant's in a good spot, staff is in a good spot. So that you're getting the best possible application in front of you.
I personally, in general, am very supportive of that, I think, yeah. Whatever we can do upfront to scale the application correctly for the applicant is appropriate, so there has to be some judgment. You know, along the way, before they have to do so much work, before they can ask us to make a judgment.
And what would be the process of recording? That being, you're typically, would that be in your memo or would you document that in the letter that says we now accept that? Will any of these requirements X, Y, Z?
Um, there's numerous points where that could happen. It could happen in the pre-application letter, that actually is where it should be.
It might come to light later.
Yeah, if it comes to light later, it could come up in the completeness letter.
I think like, maybe there'd be some
Yeah.
Okay, like the, the pre-application usually probably goes to whatever agencies participate and the applicant, is that right?
Pre-application letters, we don't usually send it to other agencies.
Just the applicant.
It's, yeah, it's usually between staff and the applicant. We'll consult with other agencies and departments if we need to.
Yeah, I would think a completeness would be like a a more public time to, to hear that, but again, we, we didn't, we didn't spend a lot of time on, on the nuts and bolts of this until we knew if this was something you wanted to spend time fleshing out.
And it hasn't been our practice to put that pre-application letter and that completeness letter in your packet, but they are part of the project record.
I'm, I'm wearing my well worn, what were they thinking hat from the master plan days, so.
Yeah, it's a good question. All right. We're open to input on when that's just
So we're in favor of considering something along the lines of A one and two?
Yeah, and we can always come back to
I'm also wondering if it could be phrased, you know, if the planning director goes through this pre-application process and they determine, yeah, we think there are these appropriate waivers, this and that, that then when it comes to us, it basically says, the planning director has recommended waiving X, Y and Z. But if the planning commission in the process of looking at the whole thing says, we're really uncomfortable with X, that that can get looped back in? I mean, it seems unlikely, but just that.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I think, I think that your county attorney probably in an application would be able to help with that, but I think that you would, you would need some evidence on the record that this, you know, that the standard, that there is some issue with this standard. So if a member of the public's coming in and saying, you waived this wetland standard, but here's what we think the impacts might be and why we think there's adverse impact, you know, if you have, if you have a something on the record that explains why there's a concern.
And
Could do that, you know, but we can think about
From the staff side.
Addressing them.
You know, our waivers are going to most likely be the quite obvious. You know, the ones we see that it clearly has no adverse effect. If it's getting gray, our response would probably be, explain to us why in your application and let the planning commission and the board decide why this doesn't happen in that.
Okay.
And it could always be part of our motion to recommend if it's a two step, that the county commissioners delve into that particular issue if it came up.
Yeah, we're on, we're on stumbling and just trying to balance the interest groups, right? So on the one hand, you have the applicant saying, please waive this, and on the other hand, you have, say, Sheep Mountain Alliance saying, no, we don't want mining near a wetland, for example, or we don't want this offset because X, Y, Z.
And that, and that is very much a key part of staff's decision making process. You know, if we waive this, will somebody be asking why that information is not there?
And so I think that a key piece of this is in the second half of part one, which is demonstrate how we will be protective. And I think that's the key pieces. Sure, we'll waive it, but you have to show us how this is okay.
Yeah.
How are they mitigated?
And maybe that, that would be including evidence of waiver, you know, as part of the application for, for the record or something like that, where it's already been determined to be waived, but it, it needs to be submitted as part of the package.
Exactly, that's exactly what I'm saying, and I think that's what Lee was getting at too, like what is the paper show? What were they thinking back in nineteen ninety six? Why did they waive?
And just by way of example, when we write pre-application letters now with our standard SUP provisions, one of the basic application requirements stated in article four is to provide a housing mitigation plan. Well, if this is for an SUP for a hunting lodge out, you know, at the base of Lone Cone, those regulations don't apply. So we will say flat out, you So we will say flat out, you do not need to rep- uh, respond to this criteria.
And I guess what I'm asking for is to say that because you are a hunting lodge in the middle of nowhere. Just give that because clause so that in twenty years we can reference. Welder rationale, it's cause.
Or because you're operating in an area that doesn't have that requirement.
Whatever the because is. It's a dry gulf ninety-nine percent of the time.
And again, we're getting into implementation here.
But that's what we're trying to tee ourselves up for is how to make implementation.
Yeah, I do imagine that within this concept, there would be some, we would wanna draft when notice would be provided of waivers. Um, and then, you know, at what point the decision's made, those two things definitely seem. It would be in the reg so that everyone's on the same page, but then how that's done. You know, whether it's part of the staff packet or the.
That's up to her, but I think it's an important piece to make sure is documented.
Okay, B? Moving right along.
Okay, great, so um. B is a simple statement at the beginning of both sections of the review criteria. So right now, your review criteria just goes straight into the first one, applicant information, whatever. So the idea is that the burden is on the applicant to demonstrate that the mining operation will meet the following review criteria. Which usually that's said in in whatever your process is. So, you know, when it talks about the B O C C decision-making, it would say the burden's on the applicant, the B O C C could do this. Since this doesn't have the process, it kind of got left out, and I think that there's been some misunderstandings from some of the comments about. The nature of the application, which is really the applicant does the work and then you evaluate the standards. So it seemed like a helpful addition. So those are the two new ones. The setbacks are different than in your memo because we would be pulling that waiver of of all criteria instead of just the setbacks. And so in here, we um, we would just recommend cleaning up the setback language. Was confusing, but basically cleaning up and saying that it's two hundred feet from residential structures, not owned, leased, or controlled by the applicant. Fifty feet from any road right of way or property line of any property, blah, blah. Unless waived according to, and then we would cross-reference wherever we stick that waiver.
We talked about that last time too, we had, we talked about, well, there's a house on the mine, like that's where the mine manager lives, can't have an offset. So this just cleans that up.
Yes, yeah, and 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 your original language said the property lines, but that doesn't take into consider. You know, the property line where there's a residential structure is more arbitrary, like it, you know, if you have a an acre. Property versus a four hundred acre property.
And as as an example, um, we have those types of separation requirements in our marijuana regulations. And we say, we say in there that we're measuring to the residents, not to the property line. You know, cause if you've got a thirty-five acre property. And the house is clear on the up far side, you know, what does it matter? Um, and then also noted in there, uh, we are striking the quarter mile from a Colorado designated scenic byway. Every single highway in this county is a scenic byway. And if we put a requ- uh, setback requirement. We're gonna be waiving it every single time. So that's why.
I didn't catch that we're completely striking up.
Taking out the, yeah, the quarter mile from a Colorado designated scenic byway, just in looking at it, any anybody. Yeah, our proposal or our recommendation is to strike it and rely on the other, you know, we have visual impact.
Secretly call out, you know, that visual impacts to the scenic byways.
So this is just one that, you know, anybody that wants to do any sort of mining operation within um, a quarter mile of a highway. Would be forced to come through and get the exception, and that's, you know, setting it up for failure.
Highly agree with that, we have a total of what, four sections of highway in the county?
Every, every, all of one forty-five, all of one forty-one, all of sixty-two.
Right, but then off of that highway, there is significant land space. All you had to do was look at their map to see that. My house is significantly further than a quarter mile of scenic byway.
Right, but I'm concerned with that, um, if you take all those linear highway miles and put a quarter mile on either side. That's a lot of acreage that is um, that and. That would be. Very limited with respect to applying, I mean, it could preclude entire properties. Is is my concern.
And the industries, if I remember correctly. So you may had something to say about that.
So then what are the other mitigation?
So we have uh, mitigation standards for visual impacts. And uh, uh, you know, noise, dust, lighting, uh, all of that. So that's where. That's where the review would come in.
If you guys want, I can leave it highlighted and we could come back after public comment. I don't think you have to decide right now, but I'll leave it highlighted so we don't forget, I guess. And we can keep talking about it now too, but it's just a suggestion.
Yeah, it's just, it's interesting because, you know, in a very rural county with. Hundreds of thousands of mi- square miles of. Open space.
But what about that property owner who wants to mine and they're within a thousand, you know, they're only a thousand feet, they're a thousand feet away from the highway?
I don't, I mean, you know, this is the point of land use codes, isn't it? This is the same reason that we wouldn't allow a chemical plant in downtown Telluride, because we don't want one there. So if we have a scenic byway that has been a designated scenic byway. Then the idea of, say, gravel pit right next to it, or an open pit mine right next to it. I'm not talking about the west end where you can see a mine, but it's a distance, I'm talking about right along the corridor. Maybe it's a thousand-foot corridor, but like, do we really want to impact a scenic byway?
That's something for you to consider under the visual impacts, but if you start out with the regulatory restriction right up front. That it has to be set back a quarter mile from a a hu- a byway. Like I said, that immediately eliminates thousands of potential acres. And uh, you know, I'm gonna point to the um. You know, the old Deep Creek Limestone Mine, that's on a scenic byway. You know, if they wanted to resume mining up there.
How far off the scenic, I guess they're not a quarter of a mile, but they're.
They're not a quarter mile.
So then we have a waiver process, but you don't wanna have to waiver every single one of these.
Exactly, I I would rather rely on the visual impacts criteria and the other criteria in the code. Than having to have, you know, starting from a position of no but.
I mean, in the limestone quarry example, you're right, it's up, you don't see it, it's all up, so you can't see it.
So that would be a mitigating, um, and they also have a very significant um, berm at the front edge of their uh, of it. That would be what they would explain in their application. Is that uh, it's mitigated because it's up and we've got this additional screening built into it. And uh, so it'd be reviewed under the visual impact criteria, not under the setback criteria.
That's in a quarter mile. Is it quarter miles?
Quarter mile on either side.
So you're probably encompass number of existing mining sites in disappointment.
So I guess rather than doing away with it, should we make it smaller than a quarter mile? I mean, one side's up, I'm thinking of Highway one forty-five, cause I drove it this morning, one side's up and one side's down, it's like by the river. So then you have the river offset. So maybe that is enough offset to mitigate visual impacts along that stretch of scenic highway.
And you're not abandoning. The offset, you're not, you're not abandoning the setback completely, it's two hundred feet.
Where is it two hundred feet? Fifty feet from any road right of like. Kind of what any building's gonna be.
I I however. Yeah, I do believe that a quarter mile is. Bit too far.
Quarter miles bit, I get that, I totally get that, and your example of the limestone quarry is very legitimate. I just am concerned that these are not just highways, they are scenic byways.
What you could do is um, so in our um, scenic view quarter overlay. There's two different standards, um, this is in the Telluride region. So Highway one forty-five going south from the roundabout. Uh, has a two hundred foot setback. And Highway one forty-five going east of the roundabout has a one hundred foot setback. For development from the highway, and then we grant variances to all of that.
I have a question, do you? I'm thinking about the scenic byway designation, do they have any power to control, goes on? Is that just a good idea?
It's a. It it's a recognition. And there's certainly some tools to help um, improve and enhance. For example, there's been grant funding uh, to upgrade the uh, interpretive materials uh, around the hanging flue. You know, so it's more of a promotional. Type of thing. Uh, it's not, it it's not written as a regulation.
Well, I, that's one perspective of it, the other way of looking at it is, it's the first step of along the pathway to say a national park. Where we say, this is beautiful country that we don't want negatively impacted visually, because it is beautiful country. National parks are preserved, a scenic byway is a way of designating, it's a beautiful piece of country. You can still do stuff out there, but we just wanna make sure that this is maintained as beautiful country. So I guess I just have, I have some hangups, but just completely saying, well, whatever, we're just not even gonna have a, an offset from scenic byway.
I guess what I'm saying is, uh, rather than the quarter mile, if we went to the two hundred foot. Like we have for our scenic view quarter overlay would be um, make more sense. But at a quarter mile, we're gonna be getting a request for modification on every single property that wants to mine along.
Then make it two hundred feet, I mean, that that also has some precedence then. But this is just a very eleventh hour to be changing something I felt was rather significant. I think there should be something.
Yeah, and I I think it's a recommendation, we don't, I don't see a legal issue with keeping it because we're working on a waiver process. That would accommodate, you know, that wouldn't render someone's property useless. So I do, I think that's a recommendation for you all, um, the two hundred foot also. I can change things now, but I would say.
We're gonna get all these changes cut in, but in the meantime, yeah. There might be more support for two hundred than for quarter mile. No, no quarter mile.
Do you guys want me to make changes now or just wait till after, like? Okay, the the site description piece is just that we realized there was no corresponding application material for setbacks, so we asked for that. Right, the, we started with the big ones, so these ones are definitely smaller, but the depart- Department of Energy. Yeah, Department of Energy um, requested that they're, that they do, they basically said that they do tons of. Tiny reclamation projects that are like. You know, one, one, I don't know, one mine opening. So they asked for some sort of, and they specifically suggested, I think, one acre, I thought that was large, we recommended half of an acre. But you know, if they don't, if they could have an exception to not have to give an activity notice for every one of them, if there's like a certain scale. So we thought it would be appropriate to do if it's less than half of an acre surface disturbance, or separately. Or you only give an act, let me say this again, you only need to give an activity notice if it, if the activity is more than half of an acre. Or if you're hauling materials offsite, because that's one of the counties' chief interests is understanding what's going on to their roads.
Didn't we have some other language somewhere about? The ser- the surface disturbance of fifteen hundred square feet for exploration? How does have to make her feel about that?
Maybe I'll look at it while we take public comment and come back to that, you want me to flag it, yeah?
So there's some kind of continuity.
Yeah, I think that's the difference between whether it's exploration or bumps up to a mining operation, but.
You know, it was exploration miner, whereas.
It didn't need to look, I wasn't remembering right, okay. Yeah, maybe we can make a match that, okay. Okay, this was also in your memo, so this isn't new, um, the concept of of. In a, in a water quality monitoring plan, if one is needed, that um, that the applicant would identify contaminants of concern. Along with water quality um, concerns. So there's some language there and that's suggested by the watershed coalition.
Yeah, where there would be a list of chemical.
But isn't that in dreams?
Yeah, so I wouldn't say that we make the list, I think the applicant can explain to us what they're predicting to have. They may give us a list of if there are any um, contaminants of concern predicted at the site, on site. So that probably would be in the dreams application.
And I view that as something like, if we had an application. And we or the folks from the watershed coalition were concerned. That it wasn't clear enough, we would have a meeting and they would say, we think you need to ask for a more specific list of X, Y, and Z, and we could do that, right? Isn't that how this?
Yeah, I don't think you're precluded from already asking for that, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, my only, my only issue with this is that like a gravel pit in a certain area is just simply not gonna be acid generating. And so the characterization of materials to be mined is great, but now we're starting to dictate what tests they have to run. And we're not dictating all of them, we're calling out one, one particular test, which is the acid generation test. It's nitpicking and it's uh, it's specific here, so I just.
Tried to say such as, so that it wasn't blocking. This whole thing may be too much blocking an applicant too, and I think that's.
Yeah, I know, I like the idea of characterizing materials to be mined, I think we kind of covered that in other places, but I can imagine waiving like. Acid generation testing for certain materials, you're just not gonna do it.
Yeah, so we'll highlight that, we could, we could wordsnip that a little bit. Yes, I do think that you could come back to that. You could ask for that anyway, so you're not precluded from it.
So C here, like spot on, right?
You like these two?
Okay, so C six oh three E. And well, P, water quality impact. Is one that we know is gonna be met by dreams. Unless the project doesn't have to go through dreams because it's too small or too minor, whatever, right?
Yeah, the 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 type of testing that's required, I think is different, but also I I agree with what you're saying. We called those out specifically, but we didn't want, we thought it wouldn't be appropriate to require those specific tests either, so. It's in there responding to their comments, but also trying to not lock in an applicant having to do that, so. Do you even need it, I I mean, I, to to Jocelyn's point, you can do all these things anyway, so.
And to answer your question, it's the, the Water Quality Control Division is the one who actually manages surface discharges and offsite mitigating. Migration of contaminants, not the RMS, but they work hand in hand, because if you're discharging to a water body. In the state of Colorado, you you're under their purview.
And that true for groundwater also?
Groundwater is a whole different ballgame. Groundwater's tricky.
While we let the applicant tell us, okay. Okay, the weed management, I look at this as a cleanup, but thank you to the watershed coalition for pointing this out, but it just. This one sentence just didn't really make sense, areas that have a clear difference in soil type will be avoided for sample collection. I don't know where that came from at this point, but let's fix it, the application will describe how such samples are representative of the overall area. There are a couple of places where we needed to use the term impact area instead of the area affected by the mining operations, so those would be incorporated into the next draft. I don't think that that's a substantive change, that's why we labeled it like miscellaneous. And the Department of Energy owns significant lands or, you know, owns lands in the county, so they thought that they should also be included as a federal land manager. Which I think is a great point and. I don't think substantive. Okay, so that's the list for now, for, you know, for folks in the public to be able to respond to too, if they would like, but.
Okay, um, for the rest of the process, I have a few more questions, I don't know if my colleagues have additional questions to ask, but I thought you do. Yeah, I'm looking at the clock. Okay, and probably what we'll do is we'll try to wrap up our questions and corrections or changes. And then we'll take a break real quick, and then we'll turn over to public comment.
I have a couple kind of big questions. I think. Maybe my biggest question is. So it's clear that we have limited authority in terms of determining whether mining happens in the county. So we have this focus on mitigation. I guess my question is, if a project came to us, like a really substantial project. And we went through it. And we really felt like the impacts could not be adequately mitigated, could we say no?
Yes, you have the authority to deny a permit.
Yeah, you have to be very clear um and make findings as to why. But uh, you know, it, it has to be specific to that application and that proposal.
So we can't look at cumulative impacts?
All, all of your impact analyses look at cumulative impacts and you can consider that.
We have it, we've got seven, five new uranium test mines, test holes going. All five of them go to production.
Yeah, and the applicant should show why cumulatively also, you know, like in the application, they're gonna say there's these mines also. They're this far apart, there's, you know, they're gonna give all the reasons why, they're gonna. An applicant should acknowledge the other mines and address them in the area as part of the analysis. You can consider other land uses too, not just other mines, but other, other neighboring land uses.
So in theory, even if the federal and or state regulatory bodies have signed off on a project. If we find that the impacts that we are allowed to look at cannot be adequately mitigated, we could say no. I'm not sure this would happen, I just like, this was a question I still had.
Yes, but I think that you're, you're gonna work closely with your county attorney on that particular application. Because what you can't do is can, you can't, your findings can't be something that DRMS has said yes to. It needs to be for impacts outside of what DRMS is working on. So at the time you're looking at the application, you're gonna have to be very careful of that, which you would have help with.
Okay.
Yeah, I just cut the end of that, but DRMS as much as said that at our last meeting too, they said, this is what we monitor. Lighting, noise, wildlife, like things that are impacting your neighborhoods are exactly what we rely on to, to regulate them. Russ explicitly stated that.
And then I guess my other big question is this question of. What kind of precedent is there out there for um mitigating impacts to climate change? I mean, we had one example in the packet that was specifically about predicting water. Changes to water availability and quality um based on. The trends, not just based on historical data about water availability. Are there ways that we can enter that, that are specific enough that we can make it part of what we're looking at? Without it just being too big and too vague?
But I do think that the, the, where it's appropriate to ask for climate change projections is in that baseline characterization. Um, and some of the predicted impacts, so the applicant can incorporate predictions about future climate into their application. I don't think that changes like the ultimate standard, which is no adverse impact to that thing. You're looking out into the future. To understand what the impacts are and how you're gonna mitigate them, so in that way, I think asking an applicant to also give existing. And this is another time where I would say like existing data on, because water supply availability is one place where there's, there's. I just, I know this from other work, you know, there's just not great data and a lot of the data that's out there is for like the whole Rocky Mountain West and. So I, I, there's nothing you're precluded from doing, but I think that, I think those kind of considerations should be worked into the application.
But there's no precedent that you think would be useful specifically relating to climate change. That we would be able to evaluate in a way that would be useful.
Like an example from another jurisdiction, is that what you mean?
I mean, I'm sure other places are trying to think about how do you do this? How do you think about it in a way that?
Right, I don't have one on the top of my mind, just like nothing's popping in, look at that. Um, and then another way to think about that is you wouldn't be precluded from that, kind of just like this like additional testing for contaminants of concern. Like I don't think you would be precluded from asking an applicant, you know, I, you haven't fully characterized the baseline. Or the impacts to the project if we can't, if you can't provide us some indication of, you know, what the impacts of the project are gonna be. If your build out is five years from now or something.
I think we need a framework. To guide us by which to set.
Oh yeah, and that's kind of a good point.
Cause I don't feel good about leaving it out, but I don't think we're ready to put it in. But I think we have to start addressing it.
Yeah, another consideration that maybe makes it better to like ask, depending on the life of the mine also. Because you know, if, if it's a, if it's a small scale, tight, just a couple of years, like do you need climate? Do you need the climate change data for the next fifty years or not? That may not be appropriate for all sizes, so that's another. Another reason to maybe not do it for everybody yet.
But, you know, from a regulatory standpoint, I think this is something that we need to be looking at. You know, more across the board, all uses and activities, um, and um. You know, not just for mining.
Yeah, of course.
One of the mine sites I worked with had big tailings ponds and. Climate change projections is a big thing, one dated in-house, because it had mega million dollar impacts on. How they need to manage the tailings, how long the mine could operate, when the tailings impoundment would be full. But on a smaller scale, um, I think the smaller guys don't necessarily have the resources to do those kinds of projections. And certainly even on this big mine site, the data just wasn't there to give any kind of qualitative answer. So I think what we can manage on our side is, do you have water? How are you impacting water around you? And we've done that with like saying. You can't draw down the groundwater levels at the property line. You can't impact neighbors wells. And so that is a climate change consideration, because we're saying, hey, if it gets really dry and there's no more water and his ne- his well's going dry. That's gonna affect your mine operation. You can't just keep pumping when his well. Might be kind of the best we can do right now, because there's just not a lot of data out here to help us project what's gonna happen. You know, we still have really wet years that impact mine operations. We also have really dry years that impact groundwater levels. But that's all part of climate change.
It's not necessarily just water, I mean, we were to have an extended Phoenix like summers or over a hundred degrees. Imagine what that's gonna do to the roads, especially with heavy traffic, so.
But I think saying you have to fix the roads, you have to do, you have to have money in there to help us maintain roads. You know, that's where we can manage things like climate change.
Yeah, I guess for me it also gets into, we talked about this quite a bit with the solar regulations. As technology evolves and advances, we're basically relying on applicants to want to use. The most current technologies because we think it'll be better for their bottom line. But if there are things that they could do that reduce emissions or have other positive climate effects. And we're not requiring it and it's more expensive for them and they're not choosing it. You know, have we missed the boat then in terms of protecting the public?
Energy conservation.
Mm-hmm, conservation, and I do think you want to be careful to tie it back to the land use impacts of it. And so that's where it needs to tie back to the impacts to the county of a particular technology. I, I think that it would be getting further afield, you know, more questionable for the county to get into what technology they're using. But the applicant needs to explain why their technology isn't gonna impact the county negatively.
That will probably be relevant for bigger projects in addressing how they're mitigating, proposing to mitigate.
And we're fortunate that we have. A highly engaged, experienced, well-trained. Citizenship that wouldn't hesitate to offer suggestions. I mean, I remember some of the discussions about the battery type that we had during the solar thing.
Specifically to what you just said, section six dash three oh six G, conservation and efficiency. The mining operation will be planned, designed, and operated in a manner that reflects principles of resource conservation, energy efficiency, and recycling or reuse. To the greatest extent feasible. It's weak, but we can at least say like, show us where you're getting your power. Are you just burning coal all day? Or even put some solar panels on your office buildings? You know, something, it's a prompt.
We're two big captions.
Yes, thank you.
Quite welcome.
Um, Lee, I did notice that uh Matt Bama is on the Zoom.
Oh, excellent.
So, um, Matt, if you have input, raise your hand, let us know.
Will do, just listen right now, thank you.
Yeah, um, I like, I like where we're headed. Um, I do have a couple of questions, um, really in response to comments. And I, I think we're, our approach is still, we're not doing a written response to comments, right? It's not gonna happen. So one of my questions here, this is, I think from. Let me go watershed coalition. They talk about long-term bond releases related to water treatment. Final release of financial warranty requires evidence that water quality will be maintained without further agreement. Reclamation must be completely verified before any bond release. Is that even in our purview? I mean, I know we're asking for surface water data and we might say like, hey, you gotta fix the ditch downstream, but.
Yeah, that's an onsite impact that would go into the DRMS application, so I do not think so.
I agree, okay. Yeah, I mean, I'd love that, but I think the RMS would be the one. Um, and then. The CMA had a lot of good points. Some of them I thought were maybe overstated and some of them I thought were maybe um. Interesting, one of the, one of the comments they talked about was how the uranium in the West End is potentially going to drive a seven point eight billion dollar increase. Statewide GDP by twenty forty. Seven point eight billion dollar increase is fantastic, but then in the next sentence, they say that a lot of the mitigations are going to make this cost prohibitive or even. Not possible, and I was just curious, your thoughts on the impacts of our. We're not saying you can't mine uranium, we're saying you have to mitigate impacts. And from what I'm seeing, those are all pretty manageable. I can't think of anywhere in the regulations where we're saying. Noise is the only thing that jumps out to me, it's being prescriptive and something that might be hard to mitigate. So will we waive the noise requirements? Will we preclude properties from being able to operate a mine because of the fifty decibel noise level? I mean, are there even mitigations that can be done for noise? Because what I'm seeing is a huge industrial boon and yet the CMA is saying this is gonna cost too much, we can't, can't do it.
The important, important thing to remember for noise is that it is in relation to structures and sensitive populations, residences. So I, I think that there's gonna be very few even applications that are triggering those noise issues, you know? I mean, the applicant can just say there's no residences within a mile, so, you know, we don't think, you know. So noise shouldn't be an issue. Um, so I think it's gonna come up very rarely in that context, um. I do think the waiver provision, if like there is one residence that's within the sphere that they may have. I do think that that's an example where this waiver of a requirement may be useful, where, you know, if you have evidence that the landowner has waived it. And they're like, we're fine with this for two years, no problem, that may be a reason to, you know, that would be an unjust usage of your standard. If that landowner comes in and says we don't care, it'd be a tough application of the noise standard. So I, I think the flexibility there, um, that's another good example. Yeah, 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 first of operation, yeah.
Yeah, it, it goes back to, you know, what I said about, you know, for every project, every property and every project. There's so many different ways that it can be designed. And uh, yeah, for, you know, if um, uh, an operation wanted to, you know, run twenty-four seven. Um, which meant a lot of big bright lights, that would be at odds with um, uh, you know, the dark sky uh preserve goals.
Absolutely, and that will have a, an economic impact. I mean, if you can't operate twenty-four seven, you won't make as much money.
And, but, but there's no way for us to um. It, we, you know, well, we're not that prescriptive. We're, we're asking people to say, what are you proposing and how are you mitigating? What are the potential impacts? How are you mitigating them? And then we decide. Um, and, you know, so, you know, we're not setting them up in a way that. Um, they're incapable of um meeting our standards. We're saying, how are you doing this?
One example that you gave earlier though, and I think that lends credence to the need for a waiver is. If you have to have a fifty foot offset from something and it puts you building a road through a cliff. That could cost a lot of money or be completely impossible, so having a waiver for something like that does.
Yeah, yeah, and you know, it's all very much property specific, project specific. And uh, you know, it's like building a house, uh, there's, you know, a gazillion plans out there for a house. Um, they all, you know, do the same thing, they provide shelter, but, you know.
There's a lot of ways to build them.
Lot of ways to build them, and then you get to pick out the bathroom tile.
Now, what about these comments throughout? The CMA had a lot of comments basically saying, here's an example. Because these lighting standards lack specificity, they violate due process and are unconstitutional. So back to my very first question, we have never had a, a lawsuit so far and our, our standards have been very vague. How, as, as an attorney and maybe Mara, this is a question for you, how do we respond to this? I, I would like to be able to give them, not a written response, but how do we respond to them and say? Yes, they lack specificity, but they also don't preclude your ability to meet the lighting regulations. You, you tell us your means and methods, is, is, would that hold up in court?
Yeah, so there is case law in Colorado of the Court of Appeals upholding local regulations using the term. Significant, uh, no significant degradation and no significant deterioration is that case instead of no significant impact. But the court looked at significant means, blah, 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 they went to the definition, here's what significant means, here's what deterioration means, here's what. deterioration and degradation, um, anyway, so there, there's case law that we rely on and that's part of why we structure our standards. The way that we do is because of that case law, so the, the term significant adverse impact being a corollary to that. So, I mean, we, we do think that, that mitigating impacts and, and demonstrating no adverse impact. Is at the core of your land use authority, um, that's why we structure the regulations the way that we did. And um, the other, so stating that the burden of proof is on the applicant is meant to further bolster that. And be, you know, make that clearer for folks, that the application materials are really where the case gets made. And then also information at the hearing that's exchanged as well. Putting that on the app, so the, the idea is you put everything in the app, you put the details in the application materials. Um, so that the, the um, standards are not overly prescriptive too. I think that's the other side of it is, you don't want a list of what's required and not required that is impractical for. Seventy-five percent of what might come before you, so.
Yeah, I mean, my background's engineering, I like things black and white, but also engineers design things and then say, you tell me how to build it. Like, I'm not gonna tell you how to build this, and I think that's what we're trying to do here, we're saying. Figure out how to meet the standards, tell a person to do it. If it's impossible, let us know, we'll see if we can waive it, but.
Yeah, yeah, and the, and we have not reinvented the wheel here, there are these types of impact based regulations throughout this thing.
You already talked about the high country. The other question I had was about um de-watering, one of the comments, I can't see where it is now, but it talks about how. You won't let us de-water hard rock mines because of your groundwater regulations. I went back and looked at our groundwater regulations. To me, what we have said is, you can't have a negative adverse, you can't have an adverse impact on groundwater. At property lines or to your neighbors or down through, but not that you can't actually change the groundwater level on your mine site. And to my mind, even if we said that, de-watering a mine would be a beneficial use. Because you're mitigating the potential for acid mining.
And it's an onsite, it's an, it's an onsite impact that would be covered in the DRMS application, not the county's application.
And so nothing that we're saying here would disallow hard rock mine de-watering onsite during operation. That's how I read it too.
To the larger question, and I'm not sure which of our.
to the larger question, and I'm not sure which of our legal minds needs to jump on this one, but, um, we haven't been successful, and I think we're about to find that out when we have our comments. We haven't been successful at communicating, reaching agreement that the fact that there is a significant amount of overlay between our requirements and Dreams or some other, or CDHPE or whoever else is participating in the, the feds, um, that from our perspective, the combination of here, here are the regs that you need to meet. Yes, they duplicate Dreams or they closely follow Dreams and we'd accept their Dreams application, information to resolve those requirements.
We haven't, we haven't, we haven't.
Can you speak to the, um, concerns that we're trying to usurp, usurp state law or federal law?
Yeah, I mean, we continue to look for ways to, to say that over and over again, but the, but we do not think that the current structure of your regulations does that at all. And so we've, we've tried to keep bolstering that and saying you can't submit either the DRMS application or these application materials. Um, we looked at, we even looked this week at whether there was a better way to say that and we can keep thinking of it, but we, we thought it said that pretty clearly. So we didn't, we didn't come, we thought about it. We didn't come up with a recommendation there. Um, I just, I, I think that you're, you, you're there, but helping people understand that, I, I, um, we continue to do that and we've offered to sit down with the, the Mining Association again and really walk them through some of the process and answer some questions about how that would work. Um, and, and are optimistic that would be helpful. Cause it does seem like some of the things that are happening are misunderstandings about the way that, that's why I spent a lot of time talking about the way impact-based regulations work because of that.
Well, maybe we need to show rather than tell. Do we have, um, any horizon on when we think the next mining application's gonna come through?
No.
Okay. Cause they're waiting to see what the regs are for.
As Kay just said, we had a gravel pit that we approved three months ago. Didn't you say they used their DRMS permit as middle to us?
Yes, they did.
And that was a good thing, that they didn't have to recreate the wheel for us. That checked our boxes. Granted, it wasn't new boxes, but that checked up.
But, you know, in looking at that application versus what we knew that was in our draft, um, you know, we were getting pretty, you know, we didn't check it completely against the draft, but we were getting pretty much everything addressed that we needed addressed. Um, so I, you know, I think it's, um, you know, I, I think, you know, in the end, um, you know, anybody, you know, that's in the, you know, the business of developing anything always wishes for, for less regulation. Um, and then on the other hand, you've got, you know, people who wish for more regulation and we're somewhere in the middle.
Okay. Um, one of the segments of the CMA memo, section six, stop and think what my notes are. Um, it's on page 111 of the, of the packet. Quaker Court versus Board of County Commissioners. The position is taken that, um, every mineral deposit in the West End is within 500 feet of a wetland, river or stream. Um, do we have a factual response to that? Or is it because it's the high watermark of any natural water body? I mean, how technically accurate is that statement? Do we know?
I have no idea.
Have means find now?
Um, I mean, it, you know, it's parcel by parcel, um, you know, show us the documentation. Um,
All right.
And instead of, I mean, I think our, our, the way that we looked at that, I, I don't have a factual response to that, but we, our response was to look into this waiver, um, you know, concept. I will say that the, um, that I do think some of, there was some misunderstanding in the Mining Association comments that, you know, they also put a circle three miles around every, um, municipality. And your regulations ask an applicant to analyze visual impacts to a town if you're within three miles of a town. That's not the same as a setback within three miles of a municipality. That's not in there. So I do think some of their mapping, um, we didn't, we didn't, you know, take it apart, but I do think there were some misunderstandings in there.
Okay.
It also says in here, mining claims are 1,500 feet inland. And that, that's what then triggers this.
The ones that are 1,500 feet on the map. Okay.
We're looking at impacts. We're gonna be looking, I think, more specifically at the state. Like, not necessarily the entirely mapped mining claim.
Right. That's true. Good point.
And I, I also think that we go back to the seasonal drainage discussion we had earlier. The high watermark of a water body isn't necessarily the same as bakeable on a storm discharge drainage in the West End where when there's a big rain event, you get 15-minute flash flood and then it's gone. I don't know if we need to do anything to flush out our definition of that or if the Army Corps has definitions of that, but a dry gulch is not a water body 99% of the time, so. And I don't know what they map. I don't know if they map every dry gulch, but how, how do we help them see that a dry gulch is not a water body?
Right. I mean, the, the best way at this point that we thought would be, was that waiver of provisions that create unjust results because, I mean, the state is going through an entire rulemaking right now on, you know, a state dredge and fill and what the meaning of state waters is in that context. And like, you know, for the, for the county to get into that in their regs, I do think it's gonna create a lot of confusion. It's gonna create additional prescriptive regulations that are inflexible. And so creating additional flexibility for the applicant to explain these things is just like the, the, the approach we've taken because we, it just doesn't seem productive to kind of go back and forth factually on.
Another area where
Happening.
Video, photographic or a site visit would do wonders to mitigate. Is our standard correctly stated here 500 feet from a wetland?
Yep.
Um, out of curiosity, now we just approved the airport off, uh, offset setback for the wetland. And wasn't that 200 foot above their house?
It's 200. Okay.
Yeah, that was a 200.
I don't know the airport.
Yeah, so maybe for consistency there, we should double check those numbers.
Okay, let's, I'll put that on your, like, list, I guess, to look at.
Yeah. I think.
I'm deferring to people with more experience in the field.
I can understand that. Yes, there's, there's a strong voice down at the end of the table. Um, Matt, you got any questions or anything? Cause at this point, we're gonna take a eight-minute break, then welcome on. Public folks.
Looking forward to the comment, but I'm good otherwise. Thank you.
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, at one of our meetings, I'd asked about brines and how we were going to brine extraction and mineral recovery.
Yeah, I did. I think that was at your March meeting and I have to look back at my notes cause I'm like, I've been too long. Yeah, yeah.
Thinking in terms of, you know, with, say, EV batteries and use of lithium.
Yeah.
I know towards the West End, I can't remember if it's San Diego County or Montrose County, but we have a fair reclamation extraction facility right now that was looking at evaporation ponds and reuse and reclamation of minerals close to evaporation pond. If we find that we have lithium in our, in our site, I don't even know if it's an issue for our county, but if we do have brine extraction where we have potential mineral recovery, we wanna make sure these regs apply to that.
Talking about the brine extraction down on the doors.
I think that's Montrose County, but even so, I mean, if we're trying to cover all our bases here, I would just wanna make sure we cover brine extraction. And I think it went back to the definition, how we're definitely, how we're defining minerals and how we're defining the extraction and mining. And one of the comments said something about this does not include water or something like that. And I just wanna make sure we cover that base.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we fixed that. Um, what we were saying was it doesn't, uh, include, you know, water wells.
I get that.
Yeah.
But if an applicant comes in and says, no, you said groundwater, and if you're extracting groundwater for mineral recovery, that's we have to fill a groundwater well.
And certainly there's some groundwater from which there are many minerals to be recovered.
Many, exactly. And that's, I mean, that's a good thing. I wanna be, I'm not saying let's, I'm just saying that we want that to be covered by our regulations.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Kay's right. I just, I, I need to go back and look. So we could come back to it after public comment if you want.
All right, and, um, do we feel that the, the CMA's point about, um, that we're, we're preventing the remediation of, um, legacy abandoned uranium mines? We don't feel that we're doing that because we do have the ability to have a lighter process for small-scale reclamation projects specifically.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's something that you all are welcome to discuss. Like I said, the state law that recently passed has notice only for reclamation-only projects. And I think that's what they're referencing is the state laws changed to be notice only and to further facilitate those. Um, and I think it's a policy decision for you all, whether you wanted to be more aligned with them or have them come in for, and I think you've already, you know, hashed that out and you determined to do the one-step review at a previous meeting. So if you wanna, you know, if you wanna bring that back up, we could talk about changing that.
Okay.
But I don't think, I think it's a policy decision for you all. I don't think there's a right or wrong there.
Okay.
Well, and we do have reclamation only for anything under five acres. So if it's just, but I mean, five acres is a pretty big space.
Yeah, and that's how that, the under five acres is also the state's definition of a reclamation only permit that would, that would be subject to notice only.
So we are in line with the state's new AUM?
You, so the state requires notice of that type of activity under five acre reclamation only. You require a one-step review.
Okay.
And, and it applies our reclamation only guidance as opposed to greater than five acres bumps into the full-blown mining operation. Which is way more.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And again, just for the record, the, one of the main benefits, benefits of having a one-step review is that it's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting and I think, you know, we're relying on our ability and the public's ability to track everything related to mining that's happening in the county when we're looking at cumulative impacts and decision-making. So I have a preference for at least one public meeting or even something that's scaled.
Okay.
And one thing Kay had said also was, uh, we can be fairly nimble here. So if in two, three, four years, we're finding that our process is stopping reclamation, then we can revise our process to change only for everything.
Okay. Then we will take an eight-minute break. We'll be back at five minutes to noon. Thank you all my folks here for your patience while we choose through the process.
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
I
Yeah, I think you just go up and uh touch the uh stop button. There we go.
Okay, um, we are back. Yeah, see the clock because of the sunshine, but I'll assume we did good. For the public comment aspect of this, and as I was asked in the lobby there during break, um, processes will ask, we'll alternate between the um books online and folks here. We'll start with the folks here. And so those of you who are here with the, the processes, state your name. Um, give yourself three minutes to tell us what you think or ask your questions. Generally, what we do is we record the questions down and down, and then we answer everything at the end is kind of the process that we need to use.
We need folks to come up.
Yeah, just come up to the mic here. Be comfortable. Yes, sir. Come on up. Those of you out in Zoom land, raise your hand and I'll get to using a mic. That's a mic.
So I stand, is that okay? You're good? Good. Well, thank you for the opportunity. My name is George Glazer. I'm the president uh of Western Uranium Benadium. And as I think it was mentioned earlier in the hearing here, we are operating four mines, four uranium benadium mines in San Miguel County. These mines have been in operation off and on. They're back. They started probably with very small operations back in the nineteen fifties. Uh, they were expanded considerably by Union Carbide, who operated these mines until Union Carbide got out of the business. These mines have been developed and operated off and on uh over the past uh fifty years probably. But nonetheless, I've been in this industry for about fifty years. I was with the first company that became the largest uranium producer in the United States and built the White Mason Mill, which is south of Blading, Utah. And that is the only processing plant that can process uranium and benadium ore that's now available in the United States. But anyway, the, the, the process to get permits from these mills or have these mines is very, very intense. Of course, the Sunday Mine Complex has permits from the federal government, various agencies of the federal government. It has a permit obviously from the state. Uh, it has several permits from the state and it has two permits from the county. It has a special use from the county for the, for the mining operation. And just recently, we got a permit to use uh your highway, your, your county road. And that permit, we're going to use about six miles of a previously improved road. We're responsible for the maintenance for hauling for about six months, two, two trucks a day. We had to put up a fifty thousand dollar bond. We didn't object to that. But that protects the county as far as the road goes. Okay. If we do any damage to it, you've got our bond, but we're obligated to maintain it while we're using. So some of the concerns that have been expressed by the, the commission here about mining, let me address that. First thing, and, and you look at the map, you had that map up of the county. The uranium benadium occurrences in this county are primarily only on the western half of the county, if even that. They aren't up by Telluride, you know, because that's not where the occurrences occurred. So you're looking at the, the west end of the county, maybe only a half of the county where it'd be impacted by uranium benadium. Now both, we're talking about uranium, but out in this area, we also have high grade benadium. And I don't know if you're familiar with the, the mineral benadium. Benadium is primarily been used to alloy steel, strengthen steel. The new use for benadium is, is a redux battery, which stores massive amounts of electricity. It's big as a house. Uh, it's not going to be in your cell phone. It's probably not going to be in your car. But it's a battery that you can charge and recharge at the same time. It never wears out. Uh, so they're building these things around the world, especially in China. And that's a new use for benadium. The U S right now produces almost no benadium. Producing almost no uranium. We just started gearing up uranium. The U S is the biggest consumer of uranium in the world. We consume over fifty million pounds a year. We probably this year in twenty five, with the startup of the White Mason Mill, uh, we'll probably only produce two or three million pounds. So we're way below what we need to be producing. The U S used to be the biggest producer of uranium in the world. We were producing over forty million pounds back in the seventies. It's dropped because obviously the price of uranium dropped. But nonetheless, the permitting issue for uranium mine especially is very vigorous, you know, and what we're concerned about mainly, what you're doing is you're duplicating the permitting process primarily that we do through the state. Okay? And that's where we don't object to the county addressing issues that are not addressed by the state. The state, you talked about water quality. You talked about a lot of these things. That, that's already in the state permitting. So why are you going to do it? There's no reason for you to duplicate what the state does. The state has experts at this. They have the expertise to do it and they involve the county. Obviously, they involve public in all of this permitting. You've got a right to comment however you want on these things and be involved. And then you've got your special use permit. Right now, I think you've got regulations that are three or four pages long. You're gonna, and these are gonna be fifty pages of regulations. And that's what the, the industry really is concerned about here. You're gonna do the same thing that the state does. You're gonna duplicate that. And I don't know if you have the right or not. Your attorney says maybe you do. I think that will be challenged. If you pass these regulations as you drafted them, there will be lawsuits. The mining industry will have to sue. Not just the uranium industry, but the mining industry across Colorado will sue because we don't think you have the authority to take over what the state has been designated to do. So what happens if San Miguel County does this, you know, it doesn't affect Montrose County or the other counties, except for the fact it sets a precedent. That means every other of the sixty four counties in Colorado could say, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna regulate mining ourselves. You could have sixty four different regulations in each county. It won't work. So I encourage you basically, regulate those things that you're concerned about. The housing, okay? Sure, we don't address housing in our permits. So maybe housing is an issue. The roads are already addressed under your special use, not, not state highways, but the county road. So address those things in your permit or in your process that are outside of what the, what the state does and outside what the federal government does. First of all, you don't have the expertise to do this. Mining is very technical. The state has it. You're gonna have to go find that somewhere, hire it internally or hire consultants to do it. You don't have the capability of assessing these things. That's why the state does it. You've got to rely on the expert. So what we do is encourage you do the regulations that you want to protect those issues that are concerned of the county that are not addressed by the state. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone online, care to raise your hand?
My name is Michael Moore. Sir, I'm the president of B Mining Company, vice president of Western Small Miners Association. And I fully agree with George was just talking about the, the regulations and, and this and, and be, and the Western Small Miners Association and myself, we pride ourself in mining and getting along with the B L M, the M L R B, the Forest Service. Uh, a- all of these regulations, the Health Department, we pride ourself in that. They come to the meetings. We, we, we try to follow all of this as close as we can. And you, you know, the, this today isn't like it was in nineteen sixty, nineteen sixty five. Mining industry is not like that. I remember when I start mining, it was the North Star. We could haul the waste out, dump it over the hill. And I remember we had to stop because it was going down on the highway. But, but anyway, it's not that way anymore. Waste is not that way. Uh, our ore has to be de- designated. You don't pump water out unless you just don't do that. And it's not just the mining industry. Our whole system has kind of changed. But I, I, I want to tell you this. I own property in San Miguel County, in Montrose County, mining property. And I, I, I had gotten a permit on the limestone quarry in Telluride. I got permit on Centennial Mine without any trouble. And that I went up and mined. When I finished mining, we reclaimed it, the thing, and closed the portal off, the, the whole thing. So you know, everybody here touches mining some way. You, you can't get away from it. All of us is out with it. And, and that is the regulations will put us out of business. But if I were you guys, if you want to change things, you ought to get somebody on the M L R B B board or the Health Department board, then there you can change things. But you're not going to change them, I think, the way you're going. It's going to be lawsuits. And that is, I've paid for that, those claims on these two properties for over twenty years. And that, and I have a right to do that because the, the, this is America. And I have a right to mine that if I follow the regulations of the, of the state of Colorado and, and the federal government. And I don't think the county has the authority to override Amshah, B L M, or this. I don't think they have that authority. And I know you have a job and you guys is the one that okay's the permit. You're the one that sits there and looks at it and tell me what I need to do and what I don't need to do. In fact, I called the M L R B and said, why do I have to follow you on a piece of patented property, the quarry in Telluride? And they said, because it's in San Miguel County, because this is what the people in San Miguel wants. So if you want to do that, you guys is the one that okay's it. But you're not, I don't think you're ever going to do this with you guys wanting to come up with new regulations of your own. Then you're going to have to hire an engineer. Then you're going to have to hire a geologist. And if you want to go in the mines, it will be that way. If you want to go inspect the mine, that is not going to happen. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, uh, Mr. Ekman is up first online. We can live in his mic.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you guys uh for uh including us in the uh, in the hearing today. And uh, thank you for uh your comments and review of the uh, the written comments that we submitted. I appreciate that. Um, I think, you know, and I think we, we, we're beginning to have a productive conversation here and I'm hopeful that that can continue as a general matter. As we look through all the different provisions that have been discussed today, there's sort of a general structural element that I think has been inadequately addressed. And that is the overarching principle that the county has general authority to protect health, safety and welfare. Of course, we're not denying that. But that authority is cabboned by the specific authority of D R M S uh and the state to regulate mining specifically. Um, and the law in Colorado is clear that entities other than D R M S are prohibited from issuing reclamation permits uh and requiring reclamation standards. So reclamation standards under state law includes uh, uh issues related to grading and topography, hydrologic balance, soil stabilization, revegetation, structural handling. So the county uh is prohibited from reserving for itself a veto over any of these areas that fall under the umbrella of, of reclamation standards. Um, so far in the discussion, this has been advertised as an attempt to coordinate requirements between the county and the state, clarify ambiguity there. But any, any time in these regulations that the county gives itself the authority to approve or reject an application on the basis of reclamation standards, uh, this is providing a veto authority uh, uh for the county and is, is preempted. We see this in a number of areas, uh financial warranties, uh prospecting, mining and reclamation, uh provisions related to geologic hazards. Um, and uh, uh setbacks and others. Um, now, the, the county i- is also claimed that the intent here is to cover impacts outside of the D R M S permit or areas outside or beyond. that the intent here is to cover impacts outside of the DRMS permit or areas outside or beyond what DRMS covers. The issue that, that we have with, with that explanation is that anytime there's surface disturbance under state law, that's covered by the DRMS permit. Uh, you can't have surface disturbance associated with mining activity in the state of Colorado without it being covered by DRMS. So those areas are, that the county describes are legally fictional. Um, and, and that's sort of a, an issue that pervades the, the regulatory uh, package. Um, and real quick, I just want to mention, uh, there was some discussion earlier about the potential economic benefits to the county from uranium mining. I think that's important. What we were citing in our comments was a, a study not performed by us, but performed by the Colorado School of Mines and the, uh, the nonprofit group Common Sense Institute, who found that uh, uranium mining uh, in western Colorado and associated nuclear power development could uh, drive a nearly eight billion dollar GDP increase for the state of Colorado. I'm at a conference right now in Riffel, uh, speaking with a number of elected leaders in our state from both parties who are very interested in the future of clean nuclear energy uh, for our state. But a lot of that discussion is centered around whether or not we're going to have a regulatory environment to attract uh, capital investment to get that done. Um, in a number of areas, this uh, regulation is a ban. And in others, like specifically with respect to uh, some of the vagueness um, that the, that the regulations have, it will serve as a real disincentive. Um, and I'm hopeful that we can continue conversations. Uh, we want to show you guys what we're about. Uh, that mining today isn't like legacy mining, uh, maybe do some site visits and have a closer, more productive conversation because I think if you, if you get to know really what we're all about, uh, we can allay a lot of fears and hopefully get this package to a point where, uh, where it works for everybody. But I know my time is up. Happy to continue the conversation. So thank you again.
Right, thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Okay, um, who's next from the live audience?
Let's sit because I've got notes.
You got notes?
Flip through, yeah. You know, um, coming into today, Josh Bleak with Anfield Energy. Um, we've got uh, similar area, kind of the West End. We've got some lines there. Um, was it, one of the concerns was this duplication. Um, and I just want to point out any number of agencies that could be involved in the process to start a new mine in Colorado. U.S. Bureau of Land Management, U.S. Forest Service, U.S. Department of Energy, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, U.S. Mining Safety and Health Administration, Colorado Division of Reclamation Mining and Safety, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, Solid Waste, also Water Quality, Division of Water Resources, State Soil Conservation Board, another, you know, the, the list goes on. And, and, and so we've, we've been told all along that this wasn't about a veto right. And that, and that came up a bit today. That was a bit concerning to hear that ultimately, if all of these other agencies that we had to work with, uh, were to approve the project, question was asked, would the county still have the right to say no? And we've been told all along that that wouldn't be the case. But essentially what, what this process is, is to have better transparency and to mitigate any additional concerns that the county may have. But it seems like that's not the case now. It, it seems like that this is really something more than that. And, and, and that, that's our concern. We, we would recommend as a stakeholder that have not had the opportunity to directly address any concerns of the county, that, that this wouldn't be recommended, uh, to go onto the board, the B O C C. Uh, we, we would love the opportunity to get at, at a much uh, more in-depth in addressing any of these potential concerns prior to whatever going on. Um, I, I think to do so now is kind of disregarding anything that we, any interest we may have as stakeholders, as landowners and mine owners within the county. We've been told, again, this is not intended to be duplicative. But it seems very much like that's the case. Um, we, we heard earlier that I, I think it was a gravel pit maybe, and, and that you had taken the DRMS uh, application, essentially that, that sufficed, that, that met uh, every criteria. If that's the case, if that effort is being already met at the DRMS level, then why is it that we need this addition of, of this county involvement, of these uh, mining regulations? And I know there's been a lot of things that have been said or commented on already, um, but there were some concerns. There were some concerns brought out about um, the cost or, or the expertise within. And I think that's important to point out is that it sounds like the county is going to rely on outside agencies. And as mining companies, one of the concerns we would have is what that cost is, what that time is, the, the additional bonding that may be required. Having any of those things not being done in-house is, is also very concerning to us, that this would be kind of farmed out to a a third-party group potentially and something we wouldn't have interaction on. So I, I, I know that's a short, short time period to kind of go through all these things. I had about five pages. Would love the opportunity, I love during the question period where I think Tori was answering questions, if, if there could be groups involved in that. And, and, and that's why I would, you know, we would recommend that, that there would be more time before this goes to the B O C C, that, that there's, there's more brought into this to truly include all, all the stakeholders, which we feel were very important, especially to the West End. Um, those, those West End stakeholders. So, sorry for going over. It goes quick. Absolutely. Yeah. So essentially what happened is, is this was just for public comment. Um, but, but another approach would have been to involve us in the beginning, right? And, and I think Kay has a, a comment right on the website where she says that we've reached out to these stakeholders in advance essentially to participate in the creation of this. I can assure you that that has not happened. We are a DOE leaseholder. We are a mining claim holder. We have never been reached out to directly. We've had the opportunity to participate in comment period. But that's kind of after the fact, right? We, we've been able to maybe suggest things as Adam heads done with CMA, suggest things that could be potential tweaks, but, but not really involving us from the standpoint of here's the county's concerns. You know, how, how could you guys get involved to address these concerns? You know, oftentimes not hearing the concerns until time periods like now. Even bringing up the point of climate change. Climate change is great. You know, we, not great, excuse me, I take that back, but the idea of, of addressing. Uh, we, we do as a part of mining now, what is required is best available technologies. So any surface mining in, in the group that we're representing is all underground mining, all very small mining. But surface mining, for instance, air quality with any of those generators or equipment that may be used, water quality you've brought up. Prior to any, ever doing anything on ground, we've got five quarters as, as a minimum of water sampling to take place prior to. And, and I think all that goes specifically to addressing climate or more, more importantly, environment, which is, is covered in what DRMS is doing. And, and so we, we definitely want the opportunity to participate as stakeholders. That's what we're asking for. And I, and for that reason, I would ask that the recommendation not be made the B O C C as it's currently uh, in form, in, in draft form. So, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate that. Okay, I have Emily next up. Emily, lay down. Laylaw, sorry.
Hi, this is Emily Laylaw with Sheep Mountain Alliance. Um, we wanted to say thank you for considering the mining land use codes and for your efforts to provide clarity and transparency around these codes. I wanted to quickly reiterate Sheep Mountain's support for setback requirements for riparian zones as well as near residences, public buildings, and roads and designated trails. Um, we also appreciate and support the continued use of the two-step review process in the updated land use codes. And we wanted to reiterate our support for restrictions of new mining activity within the high country zone district and backcountry areas. Um, and thanks also for your efforts to ensure compatibility with the Dark Sky Initiative. Um, also, we appreciated the discussion about parameters for waivers and just wanted to reiterate that we think waivers should be rare and that the conditions for waivers should be clear and widely apparent. And I know that Ruthie from Sheep Mountain is also an accused separately, and I believe she has some further questions and comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Emily. That was nice and succinct. Appreciate that. You were totally on target. John, who else from inside? Okay. Was there another Sheep Mountain person who wanted to speak or did?
I think we lost, might have lost her.
Did Emily cover all the bases? While we're waiting to see, um, a little bit about the process. Um, now I will confess that we have in the last three years that I've been in this chair, we have wrestled with the constructs and the constrictions on our process that make it hard to go have a beer and talk this out and come to a, a workable understanding that, you know, may not agree on all the different points, but from a process standpoint, the lawyers will tell you, well, you, you know, you really can't do that anymore, kind of the thing. And it's, it's, it's hard to make that work. Um, we did do that successfully in the solar um, effort. Uh, we ended up appointing a um, uh, basically a task force. And we put two uh, planning commissioners on there so that we weren't, we didn't have a quorum. And I believe there was a, there was a county commissioner representative and the community representatives. Um, and got to a conclusion on some technical questions like how much setback is reasonable? How much wattage do we really want to go for? We, we addressed a lot of the sort of numbers stuff effectively. And we came up with, in fact, we came up with a solar rig that ultimately the community um, activist group that had sprung up in opposition to a certain aspect of very large solar liked the plan and endorsed it, if I'm remembering correctly.
Well, we didn't have, no, that was just a working group of uh, commissioners and staff. It was not citizens.
Oh, we didn't have any citizens on it. It was just a work. Thank you for clarifying. So, yeah, I understand what you're saying about kind of the limitations of the, of the give and take that the structure, structure requires upon us. Um, so having said that, let's let, who else from Sheep Mountain wanted to talk?
Hi, everyone. This is Ruthie Boyd from Sheep Mountain Alliance. Um, can you guys hear me okay?
Um, yeah, pretty much.
Okay, um, I have some spotty internet connection. I apologize for that, but I just wanted to reiterate what Emily said about our support for the process that you all have undertaken in updating these codes and all of the strong provisions that are included. We really appreciate all of that work you all have done and just want to um, add a little to the um, waiver discussion in terms of considering something like waivers and um, would love to hear more about what you all end up thinking about those things and kind of how it would fit into the um, increased regulations that you're also considering. Um, so yeah, definitely looking forward to continuing to participate and um, continuing to be supportive of your process of updating these codes. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks. All right, um, I see no further hands up. Um, so at this point, we will close public comment. And turn back to the commission. Oh, I do see another hand up. Thank you. Mr. Steen?
Hello.
Hi.
So I'm um, speaking to you from Boulder County. Boulder County passed what we call the Mini Mine Land Reclamation Act back in the nineties. At the time, we told them that they were in violation of the state Mine Land Reclamation Act. They exempted um, any permitted operation from having to get a permit as long as they maintain their state permit. So for forty-two years, we were operating a couple of small gold mines off and on here in Boulder County. And um, just a couple of years ago, the county decided that we were in violation of the Mini Mine Land Reclamation Act that Boulder County had passed. So there was a hearing at the county commissioners and a vote of two to one. They basically tried to enforce their Mini Mine Land Reclamation Act on our permitted operations. So one thing led to another scuffling, a legal scuffling commenced. And we're now in court. And the damages that the company I represent is asking for is three hundred and thirty million dollars. Be much more than that, given the increased precious metal prices. So what you're looking at basically is an invitation for hundreds of mining claim owners in the West End in San Miguel County to sue San Miguel County for damages. Because what you've, what you're proposing here is a violation of the state Mine Land Reclamation Act. And um, no one can get a permit or get the financing to raise to explore and develop a uranium mine if they have to go through a process that is as uncertain and open-ended as what you're proposing with your Mini Mine Land Reclamation Act. So the people who are going to strike it rich are the law firms. They're going to represent these people. And I guarantee you that as much money is at stake, and it's billions of dollars located in the southern end of the near Van mineral belt, you're going to have a flood of litigation. And I believe you're going to lose. I believe Boulder County is going to lose. And I believe that this can all be avoided if you don't listen to the people who just want to strangle mining for no other purpose. They're, they're not looking to just improve the Mine Land Reclamation Act. They're not looking to protect the environment. They're looking to outlaw mining in San Miguel County. I wrote a letter that was accepted and is in the lie down. No, lie down right now. Lie down. I don't know what that was about, but I'm not lying down. What I'd like for you to do is to look at the letter that I wrote. It's not in the packet because I sent it in on the, the other day.
Yes, sir. We received it.
I'd also, uh, you have a law firm representing you that is based in Boulder County. They might want to look up Colorado Milling Company versus the county commissioners. Um, we've been successful in every attempt that Boulder County has made to dismiss this lawsuit. And I believe that's going to be a template for the property owners, the mining companies, that are going to sue San Miguel County because of your Mini Mine Land Reclamation Act. So please consider this before you pass this on to the county commissioners. Thank you for your time.
All right, sir. Thank you for your input. Hey, um, Paul, I'm not even going to attempt it. You have the floor.
Thank you. And uh, it's Selagi for all the Hungarians out there.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So I'm uh, with a company called New Vemco LLC. We have a number of mining properties and permits in Montrose County and Mesa County. I'm going to conclude my remarks with what I've heard from potential investors as to how they're viewing the current activities in San Miguel County. Cause I think it's going to impact upon the citizenry that you represent. Um, couple of things first though. You know, I've been looking um, at what it takes to make mining successful in the future and going forward to the future. And I would say it's not going to happen without community involvement. Um, I'm also going to tell you, I think, I love your objectives, but I'm not sure about all your tactics. Um, to, to be completely honest. I think we're starting in Colorado from a standpoint where we meet sustainable mining activities as set forth by the UN, as set forth by the international as set forth by the UN, as set forth by the International Union for the Conservation of Nature, uh, as set forth by others who believe we have a duty to access the minerals that we have and the natural resources that we have, uh, not to do it wastefully and to turn the land over in the best possible condition to the future generations that follow us. As I look at that framework, it, it requires a few different things, and I think you already have that with the RMS or Dreams as some of you have referred to it and our national uh, regulations and law. You have to have a plan before you touch any land or make any impact. You have to have the ability to um, consider endangered species. Um, plants, animals, what have you. You have to make sure you have your water taken in place. If you do have any impact, you have to make sure you have a plan to reclaim it. And in the state of Colorado, you have to make sure you have that funded, and I think the RMS provided you information with, what was a pretty shocking number. I would say that the of the land in our country, they have regulations that have been set up to address all the concerns everybody has. But uh, my time is short, so let me tell you how investors are viewing this. They're viewing this as duplicative. They're viewing this as uh, way for San Miguel County not to allow mining to continue. And they are very concerned and looking elsewhere, which means your, your citizens are losing jobs. Thank you.
Okay, let's stir the music. All right, um, thank you, Mr. Selagi. For the guidance and for the feedback. Appreciate that. Anybody else? No. Okay. We will draw to a close the public comment section for this item and turn to the commission for a sense of what it wants.
Lee, what, what process do we have for responding to comments? I know we're not providing written responses to written comments, but for example, we've gotten questions here today that we're not answering. Are we going to, or do you feel like we are?
Any questions that got answered in the course of the public input that we feel
I, I mean, I was taking notes and I wasn't really hearing anything that we had not already addressed. Um, I mean, everybody was clearly stating their, their positions. Um, but I didn't hear questions.
What did you hear? Or are you saying that there were some positions or statements made that we should address?
Well, for example, this gentleman in the checkered shirt, I think raised some good points. We don't have a dialogue, especially right, I mean, what I'm seeing is he's making comments and questioning the process, and we're not answering his questions. Like literally right now, we're not answering. We just said, thank you for the comments.
Yeah.
Bye. And I know we feel like we've already answered them previously, but it seems to me like maybe someone on the front here could answer those just again, just for the sake of conversation.
Well, I, there's certainly not a reason we can't, at this point in the meeting, um, respond to points that were made, whether they were questions or, or, or assertions or observations or whatever. Okay.
Do you want me to take a stab at that, or do you want to do that? I don't, I don't want to put anyone on the spot.
And um, you know, so in terms of the public process, you know, we had two work sessions, you know, we've had three review periods. Um, you know, we've had um, you know, sent out to our extensive email list with the requests that, you know, pass it on, and that has happened. Um, and uh, you know, as we've received um, comment letters and emails throughout, um, uh, Tori and her team have been very diligent in reviewing those and looking at where we can make adjustments throughout, and that is reflected even, you know, up through the um, uh, changes that, you know, were brought up today. Um, that uh, you know, we have been listening to everybody. We've been listening to the industry side. We've been listening to the citizen and environmental side, and we're trying to meet in the middle. Um, and uh, um, so uh,
The other thing that we've done, I guess I'll mention is, um, I, I think the, the, the county felt it would be appropriate to reach out to, to pick and choose who we reach out to. So you all brought this as a public process, but we have met with anyone that's requested, any entity that's requested a meeting with us. So the Mining Association requested one this week, and we were able to kind of pull together a meeting um, with anyone that could attend on the staff level. And as we said, that's very different for the decision maker level. Um, that's not possible to include you all. Um, but we, we have done that, and I think um, are planning to continue to do that with the Mining Association also. On. And I, I, I mean, it just had, so some of the brainstorms that we brought to you all are from some of those conversations. Um, you know, to his point about if there are things that, that you want to look at again. That's something that you could consider.
Yeah. And um, you know, I mentioned that, uh, you know, DOE presented their comments verbally um, because in our conversation with them, we were able to work out their concerns. Um, and so they didn't feel it was necessary to follow up with a letter. Um, and uh, you know, we've had similar conversations um, and meetings uh, with um, uh, DRMS and uh, even at that level, uh, a representative from the state AG's office. Um, so we have been working very closely, and then also BLM, you know, we've, we've met with them. Uh, and from not just the, the field office, but you know, up to the state level too. Um, both field offices, um, and state, so.
I recall when, when the RMS presented, there was a brief discussion about are, are we overlapping or not overlapping? Um, and I think what's, what's not getting across is that and maybe this is my attempt to address.
Address.
Um, we are concerned with the impacts, not the operation, not the science, not the technology of the mine. You're exactly correct that we don't know any of that stuff, and we would have to hire experts if we were going to get into that business, and we certainly don't. Um, what we're concerned about are the, the list that's of, of issues that we would pay attention to. And, and it's comprehensive, but that's the list that would get applied to, um, you know, the next large complex perhaps. But what we're concerned about are strictly the local issues. We don't have the authority to say you can't mine there. We do have the authority to say you haven't met the remediation of the local issues yet. Right? Am I on good ground here? Stop me if I'm not, because I wander sometimes. So it's, it's, it's it's a, it's a I think, and this is just my opinion as a member of the commission, I, I think that it, that we have to contend with um, the blanket sort of concerns that you have, that we are duplicating what Dreams is doing, and you know, we're not. We're, we're focusing on what the local impacts are that we're concerned about for our constituency, and we're trying to use as much Dreams data as we can to address those concerns. But Dreams doesn't know squat about our, our, about our road conditions. They do the feds, they do the EPA. It's not their job. That's our job.
And, and just to be clear, I think where we wouldn't, we wouldn't deny that we're being duplicative is in some of the application materials. We've said that we're being purposely duplicative so that you can submit the same application materials. Um, anyway, just to be clear, we are purposely duplicating some things, but we're not looking at the same.
Well, we're trying to, we're trying to, we're trying to reuse input.
Yeah.
Not duplicate functions.
You know, as we saw with the gravel pit, you know, we had the, the dream, the BLM and the Dreams applications um, as, you know, submitted for, as the application to you. And um, you had questions, and you know, we did impose some conditions on that permit that were related to our local concerns. Um, and uh, so again, you know, an example of how it worked that uh, you know, we were able to properly source uh, or assess out what was um, what was the local concern that went beyond what they had in, in those uh, applications and permits, so.
Now that said, the, the description, uh, and we've heard those lists before, I mean, I, I wouldn't want to be in you guys' shoes, frankly, to have to go through the regulatory hoops that you have to go through already. Um, we're just trying to take care of our little part of the peep hatch outside of the mining mine area itself. Um, and we're trying to do so in, in as, a, a way that's as efficient as possible for you to respond. We don't want to put more work on you guys, especially the small guys who uh, had to leave. We, we get it. I'm a businessman myself. I, I know that there are regulations that go beyond what need to be, but we're trying real hard not to do that. Now that I touch on what you wanted to touch on?
Yeah.
You want to go further?
I could add a few things if I may.
Finally. It's our time now.
I think that the point of us being duplicative is to help streamline the application process. We're not trying to be duplicative of regu- regulatory implementation. We're not trying to say as Lee just said, well, if you're using, you know, this equipment for that equipment, you're, you're not feasible. You can't do this mining project. That's not our point here. As Lee said, we're looking at the local issues, but to understand the local issues and the impacts and what the mitigations need to be, we need to understand what's happening on the mine site, right? Hard rock mine site is very different than a gravel pit. But if all we get is a transportation plan saying five trucks a day, we don't know what else we need to understand about your mine site in order to understand noise, lighting, hours of operation, those sorts of local issues. So that's why we're asking for the full-blown application that tells us what you're doing on site. It's our responsibility as county leadership, certainly the Board of County Commissioners' responsibility to know what's happening in the county. That doesn't mean we're going to say, no, you can't go blast. It means we're going to say, what are the impacts and how do we mitigate them? Um, to the gentleman who was questioning, uh, who was saying that his investors are worried that mining is not desired here, we're not saying no mining in San Miguel County. I don't think a single person up, sitting up here, I've never heard them say, I don't want to see mining in San Miguel County. I've worked with miners before. I've worked on mine sites before. My MSHA trainer, when I did my MSHA training, was an MSHA inspector, and he said, did you know the safest way to operate a mine is to not operate it? Right? But that's not what we're trying to do here. We all want things. So how do we do it so that we can mitigate the impacts? Right? The cheapest way to get vanadium is to have China do it, but is that good for the environment? Is that good for public health and safety? Probably not. We have an opportunity here to mine vanadium safely and to protect the environment when we do it and to still be productive and to still turn a profit. That's what we're trying to juggle. We're trying to help you guys be successful and protect the interests of our communities. That's the point.
Well, I, I guess, this is now my three minutes. I, I get the issue is, is what you're asking for is the same thing that we get through the state, which, which you have every opportunity to comment on. And so i- if you go through these regulations that require us to do a lot more for you than the state, you know, then you're taking over. And, and again, some of the things are outside what the state probably concerns their state. In our application, I don't think we ever addressed housing issues. I mean, it just doesn't come up. Uh, and we, we recognize that, and maybe the state doesn't get involved in that because it's not, it's not in the issue, you know, of what they're regulating. So that's what you need to do. But when, when you start to look at water quality, the state does that. Are we going to do it with both you and them deciding if our water quality monitoring is appropriate? Is, is that going to be both of you guys doing that? That's the question, because
We don't have
That's where we get into, you know, you're duplicating what the state does. And, and that means we have to satisfy the state, but we also have to maybe satisfy the county on the same issue.
Okay, well, we're, we're, we're a little afield of having reopened the public comment.
Right.
I know. I, I let her roll because I know you know you're talking about, but um.
Um, and you know, keep in mind that our process, our public process is often the only opportunity that citizens have to get informed. Um, they are not dialed into the state um, uh, process, uh, permitting process um, at all. So this is a way for people to get questions answered, um, to find out what's going on. Um, and uh, you know,
Having, having a better understanding of what's going to happen at a particular mine um, is going to help you, the mine developer with, you know, the public perception of what's going on.
Yeah.
And allow the jobs versus whatever else argument to be made.
Yeah, which was part of the rationale for um, duplicating the application material side of things as opposed to doing a cross-reference that would be very difficult for, unless you know the DRMS regulations. You know, it, it, it was for the public transparency piece to see.
To get it into the public reference. Um, Dreams? Does, i- if Dreams is reviewing an application in our county, do they refer to us? Do they?
Yes.
Do we comment on this?
Yep. Yes.
Yeah.
Good. All right, we got to decide what to do, guys. Um, our choices would be to make a vote today to recommend to the county commissioners or to defer for some particular reason, uh, which would mean August, because we don't have a
Yeah, we would be able to get back time for the July meeting.
Well, if we recommend it, those things we went through with Tori.
That's a good question. How do we get all that stuff in?
The only other question I still have is I still want a little more clarity about setbacks. General setbacks, properly on setbacks, setbacks from riparian areas. I feel like that's not.
So the, the setbacks on repairing areas, it's actually under the Surface Water Quality and Quantity Impact Assessment and Mitigation Plan. So it's six three oh five P. Um, and that section actually does, that, so that's the application part. Um, and uh, um, it, that actually doesn't set out any dimensional standards there. And then six two oh five Q, Groundwater Impact Assessment and Mitigation Plan. Um, in the impact area or within two miles of the site boundary of the operation, whichever is farther, provide a map and description of all known aquifers and subsurface water bearing fracture systems. Um, and then uh, the floodplain section actually doesn't have any uh, in the application tools, again, doesn't have any dimensional standards. And then you jump ahead to the, the review standards. Um, so six three oh six um, oh, um, Surface Water Quality and Quantity Impacts, uh, Mineral Mining Operations Will Not Be Conducted Within Five Hundred Feet of High Water Mark of Any Natural Water Body. Um, so it's not any drainage or, you know, you know, anything like that. It, it would be looking at the definition of a natural water body and mapping accordingly. Um, and then a routine vehicle machinery maintenance story, maintenance and story shall occur within three hundred feet of a water body. Um, and then it goes on to say, the planning director of board may waive this standard if the impact to water quality after mitigation would be minimal at a location closer than five hundred feet. So we've, you know, we've got it in there. Um, but uh, you know, it's, it's not as all encompassing as um, uh, you know, was stated. And then you go into the groundwater impacts, standards don't, doesn't have any numeric uh, you know, there's no setbacks in there. And floodplains, wetlands, riparian areas and fens. Again, um, that section doesn't have any numeric um, uh, limits in there. If you look at our regular wetland section in the code, there's a one hundred foot buffer um, that is used. If you look at our regular wetland section in the code, there's a 100-foot buffer, um, that is used. Um, but, um, we didn't carry that over to here.
Probably pull that in here for consistency.
Which one?
Uh, so six, three oh six Q, um, you know, we don't include the 100-foot buffer that our, uh, regulations in five dash 22.
Oh, I think half for the, for floodplains.
Yeah.
For what?
Wetlands, yeah, wetlands.
But then going back to the 500 feet of a high watermark of any natural body, to my mind, that's automatically eliminating any form of dredging or sluicing or anything like that. Is that the intent?
I'm, I mean, I don't, I honestly, I'm like, we're, I'm trying to remember the history of adding this because the goal for us is like to have the least amount of prescriptive standards possible, something like that. Um, I mean, you, I think you guys can tell me on that, but I think that you're right. That wouldn't be the goal. Uh, but also the recreational stuff is, is exempt from this anyway. So the recreational side, the casual use side of things, this wouldn't pop up.
And that, where, yeah, I guess that's my question. So this is for mining operations, which is the bigger than five acres and da, 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 da. Um, how, where, where do we say you could be a recreational little guy?
So the, the definition of mining operations does not include, we borrowed from the BLM's definition, definition of casual use. So it doesn't include like hand operated, anything. Um, you actually have a comment, um, it was submitted late, but pointing out that, that, you know, there's also some recreational mechanical.
And bankers and orange dredges.
Yeah, yeah.
Recreational?
It, it, for the BLM, that requires no, notice only that type of activity. So it's not casual use, which is what we had looked at for the BLM. It is a level above that, but it is only notice. And for you all, the, a, a valid question of like, is that something you intended to regulate? It's not something I necessarily thought of.
Is there a state, um, regulation about, um, distance from a water body?
Don't think so.
I know what you're gonna say.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I, I kind of think this one is problematic. Again, it's getting into, like, I think that in an application, you would have to look into whether this is onsite or offsite impacts covered by.
And so
We haven't looked at this in a while, but I, I think that you might want to consider getting rid of this one. I mean, the, the, the thing is anytime there's a prescriptive standard, it's in contrast to this approach of impact base. Like what you should be looking at is the impacts of what's proposed and how that affects water bodies. And this prescriptive sets us up to be like, well, should we just waive it because it's creating this unfairness? You know, it, it, you, you can see really well why these prescriptive standards run into problems.
Well, we just went through this with the wetlands, though. The reason there's a prescriptive boundary around a wetland is truly to protect a wetland. And so I can imagine there being a prescriptive boundary around a water body for the same reason, still runoff, that sort of thing.
Right. Or you let the applicant tell you where they're gonna, you know, where, what they're protecting and why. And what they are, you know, we're going to construct here, but we're not going to construct there. This is how we think we're preserving. You know, you let the applicant tell you that stuff instead.
Honestly, I think those setbacks came from comments from, um, other.
Yeah, which other commenters that asked for greater setbacks than that as well.
Yeah. And if you go up ahead, up above and look under Roman numeral one, um, you know, starts, you know, will not have an adverse impact to surface water quality and quantity. Um, and then gets into a number of, uh, things to be considered. Um, and, uh, so, yeah, the question is, you know, in that Roman numeral one, um, plus two and three. Um, so I'm on six, three oh six O. It's page forty-one of forty-nine. In the dra- in the draft. Um, so in light of what's, you know, included in Roman numerals one through three, um, does Roman numeral four achieve anything else?
Yeah, I think that's a good way to say it.
I think one response would be, I think one response would be if you allow effects to the stream, then you have a problem that you have to fix. Whereas if you say no effects to the stream, you can't, you simply can't mine with the next number of feet of the stream, then you have mitigated the potential for those. And stream restoration can take time and money. I, that would be one argument for having a prescriptive offset from the stream. As opposed to saying, just don't hurt it, but then it gets hurt.
But doesn't the state already, not part of the state process, wouldn't the state turn down the mining application that
No.
plopped down next to the river?
Oh, they wouldn't turn it down. They would have requirements. They wouldn't turn it down, that's it.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, that's right.
And so we would be going above and beyond by saying, actually, you have to be offset from the stream. The state will require, you know, turbidity or monitoring so that you're not discharging salty water into the stream. But they're not necessarily going to say you just plain can't discharge them. It might cost you better.
Would, would they be requiring the various, uh, things that are mentioned in Roman numeral two, like filters, uh, uh, logs to keep salt from coming down into the water?
That would come from an S P C C plan, I believe. And also it would be part of your permit requirement. So they might say, at this point in the receiving water body, you can't have turbidity higher than X. You figure out how to get there. Does that sound right to you, Tori?
I think that's like one approach you could take, but again, you're gonna have the, for, for the water quality place, we're gonna have to look offsite, onsite impacts for sure. And I think that is true, that the DRMS permit is going to do a lot of the onsite impacts.
And offsite. I mean, if, if you are a mine site discharging to a stream, even if it's offsite, the Water Quality Control Division regulates that. They regulate discharges, full stop.
Discharges, not like necessarily all like non-point source runoff. And I think that's the, that's where there are some gaps. Yeah.
So six, three oh five P two, A and B protects the water.
Then again?
Uh, six, three oh five P is in Paul, surface water quality and?
Oh, the application, you're in that.
Yeah, that's the applications.
And three oh six O where we're actually.
That's the standard.
Oh.
Page forty-one, if you will.
So P is gonna give us all this stuff to think about, and then O says, your stuff has to prove that these things aren't gonna pop.
Correct.
Or mitigate them, not, not here, not disallowed. I mean, yes, I don't want to be doing things that we don't have the authority to do if it's not our purview. It shouldn't be in here. But if we're looking at where we would be prescriptive and then possibly allow waivers, I care a lot more about what happens near bodies of water than about setbacks from scenic byways personally. Um, and my experience on this commission, when we've had applications before us and I've tried to dig a little bit more into what might happen impacts downstream from a development, is that we are told, oh, don't worry about it, and it's too hard to tell. Which is very frustrating. Um, I think like everything here, this depends so much on the scale, the timeline, the, you know, it's such a huge industry and there are so many variations in what it could look like. Yeah. And I think, I think some of the earlier comments that we had, I don't know if it was Sheet Mountain or other entities, but they were saying essentially what I was trying to say earlier, which is you don't know if you have impacts downstream unless you're monitoring for it, which is what we're requiring monitoring. And once you have impacts that might be degrading water quality, then you have a problem to fix. As opposed to trying to shortcut that and say, we just don't want there to be impacts downstream and therefore don't operate next to a river.
Well, the shortcut is we accept by default the state water qualities board's efforts to ensure that whatever they're putting in the water is okay. And as long as the state says they're okay, we should be okay, is the thinking.
Yeah. And it's not any effects, it's negative effects. Um, so.
Yep.
There can also, there can be positive, there can be neutral, but we're mitigating for is negative.
Yeah.
Well, all right. Then I guess the question is, do we feel that this is close enough to vote on or not?
Well, I don't think we have resolution on this issue. Are we changing that language or not?
Probably an example.
Um, how about if we just kind of run through, um, uh, Tori, maybe go to your updated memo? And, uh, but, you know, we can go through and, uh, get a sense of how, you know, if you're okay with, you know, each piece. Um, and then, uh,
So go from there.
Yeah, I want to stop sharing and then reshare.
Well, thank you.
I guess the question for us would be, are we prepared to vote on that piece?
Yeah. And, uh, yeah, you're ob- you have two options. Um, one is to, um, you know, move to recommend to the board that they adopt but with certain specific, you know, changes, um, giving us a little bit of leeway in drafting. Um, and the other is to move to continue to August, um, with the direct, you know, asking us to bring it back, uh, with, um, all the draft. Um.
And final, final words. And then it would be, for the benefit of you guys, it would be subject to proper noticing by the Board of County Commissioners and then a meeting on their part.
Yeah. Um, so, um, you know, looking at this, we've got the, you know, the waiver of requirements. Um, and, uh, so, uh, in the, the waiver section, which is, you know, stated like three times, um, you know, adding in, uh, uh, the additional um, guidance, um, that, uh, that Tori's drafted here.
Well, the existing waivers for application materials in this concept would be also allowing for a waiver of, um, criteria. Um, but because those are criteria, they do need, we, you know, they need some additional process there for how you're gonna waive those. So.
Variance.
What's that?
It's like a variance.
It is like a variance, but it's also allowing an applicant not to have to get kicked to the BOA and, and putting some, you know, not going, not fully just referencing variance, which we played around with too, because it sounded like a lot, um, for an applicant to have to go to the.
Yeah, it, it's not so much a variance, it's a modification.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, yeah, I would like to not set this up in a process where we're introducing yet another reviewing body and decision maker. Um, and I think, uh, I also think, you know, you as the planning commission and the B O C C are in the best position because you're seeing the whole, the whole picture and the whole scheme of things. Um, rather than, uh, you know, a specific, single subject, um, you know, modification or variance, uh, that would be going to the BOA. So, um, it really does, you know, belong within the whole, the whole thing.
Yep. So we, we have the concept and I think you could move forward with the recommendation that, you know, endorsing that concept. Or, you know, you could wait and we could flush that out more because this just came up this week. Um, but we, we haven't like, we haven't worked out the process yet and we haven't worked out, you know, at what point would notice, you know, what point would the determination be made and at what point would there be public notice of that? So, um.
And would the ability to, um, waive or modify a requirement be strictly for the administrative review stuff or is that also our authority as well?
Interested on input on that, but I think you would want something efficient. So you could be the only ones, but I don't think you would want a two-step review process for a waiver. You know, something like that. So, open to input, but we hadn't gotten that far even.
Yeah, you know, quite frankly, I think it, you know,
I'm in favor of allowing you to flesh out this concept and present it to the Board of County Commissioners. I don't think, for me, this rises to the level of needing to continue.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm trying to scroll for you.
Oh, you want me to keep scrolling? You ready? Next one. Burn approved concept was the next one, just stating that upfront of the review criteria.
Right. Any comment, question?
Uh, my comment is if something is covered within the Dreams application, that we shouldn't go through that again on the county level. And is, are there points where they're submitting the Dreams application just to cover things that we're requiring?
Um, so, you know, like I said earlier, um, I would hope that, you know, you know, somebody who's compiling a good application um, would give us, um, you know, a written narrative or table that says, you know, application material, you know, A, C, page, standard B, you know, A, C, and, you know, C, whichever section. And, uh, you know, so give us that roadmap, uh, to show us exactly where it's at. Um, because, uh, you know, I find that easier to anal- uh, you know, analyze things that way. Um, and, you know, that's all the implementation now. Um, and everybody writes their applications differently.
Yeah, we've worked with other applications, not mining, but, um, that had to do a federal E I S and they, they gave us the E I S and then, or they gave the, the, it was a city at this point, but the city, the E I S and then a crosswalk like A is talking about that says, you know, here's where in the E I S we talk about this. And they didn't, they didn't have to pull it out. They didn't have to edit it, but they just gave that crosswalk. Um, so I have seen other jurisdictions do that.
Yeah.
And that would certainly, in fact, that would be encouraged by us.
Yes.
I mean, and the implementation point, that's something that could be said as simply as, if you just give us your DRMS application, please give us a crosswalk.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, um, let's finish our summary of your changes.
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, setbacks, um, you know, 200 feet from a residential structure not owned, leased or otherwise controlled, um, by the applicant and 50 feet from a road right of way. Um, unless waived according to, and then so, you know, we've got that section six, whatever we write. Um, and then there's still the question of quarter mile from a scenic byway and, uh, uh, you know, my problem with having that quarter mile from a scenic byway is that it puts an extra burden on all the property owners that are along any state highway in this county. Um, so if you wanted to go down to the 200-foot, um, uh, setback, uh, that aligns with our scenic view corridor overlay, I think that's more supportable. But a quarter mile is an awful lot and that, I mean, that, a, a quarter mile, you could be getting multiple, uh, parcels back from the highway at that point.
I would support that too.
Yeah.
Seems more reasonable.
Yeah.
Reasonable and it's consistent. I mean, one of the comments we got was like, hey, if we're going to control blasting, are we going to tell Telsky they can't bomb for avalanches? And it's not that we're trying to control Telsky, but it's like, can we have some consistency across our regs? And so I think that's the 200-foot, if that's what's been established, that's totally consistent. Same with the wetlands and riparian corridors then. We have an established 100-foot boundary around wetlands. Let's do this. Let's do the same for rivers. Doesn't have to be five hundred feet, but we have that, it exists, it's been used, it's been put to the test.
Sure, I can see Matt. I see other questions. Okay. So, you want to feed goes back and from the highway?
So for what you just wrote there, Tori, would also make sure, let's make sure that goes into the wetland section too.
I think for the wetlands piece, if we're going to be prescriptive, I'm in favor of the bigger setback. Otherwise, I think we should do what I think Tori has suggested, which is take that language out and rely on the strength of our ability to evaluate mitigation and on the other entities that regulate.
Yeah, I mean, the more I look at it, I do think that's the more legally sound approach as well. It will enable you to, it will enable the applicant to then explain whether this is an onsite or offsite impact, whether this is addressed in the D R M S application or not.
Our land use code already has a hundred foot buffer around wetlands.
Yeah.
And so having a hundred foot buffer around wetlands is entirely consistent with our other, with the rest of our land use code, which says that buffer around a wetland is actually a really critical part of the wetland. So are you saying?
I think that's only one small piece of what we're talking about. I wanna do away with language that may make what we're trying to do legally dubious, so I think my opinion is we should probably listen to Tori on that.
I'm not saying you're precluded, but I do think, I think it's like one of the most problematic things in here.
So, uh, bring up again.
Yeah, because of, because of the existing D R M S regulations, that's what makes it different than the rest of your land use.
Right, so bring up again the, to be excised, tell me where it is.
My news code also has a lovely numbering system. I mean, that's, you know, a question for you all, I guess I'm writing it down, but.
Well, the question for us, but we're making a question for you, is what is legally defensible? If we're saying we wanna protect water bodies.
Yeah, I think the impact based regulations keep you in the, in the safest legal lane, I do.
What does that mean then for other specialty use permits where we have a hundred foot perimeter?
Well, the difference is the, is the overlap within the division of reclamation mining, mining safety. That is what makes this stiffer than the rest of.
I think it's really wise just to do what they do or not do it at all.
Yeah, yeah, that, the problem with the prescriptive standards is the potential to conflict it with our MS.
Right.
And the impact based ones allow for that flexibility so that you're not conflicting with it.
So we're, we're, the, the suggestion is that we will vote gay or nay on a change that would strike six, three oh five. Letter O, four.
That'd be six, three oh six.
The more I talk about it.
I was too far away from my screen. Sixty oh six.
Three oh six, yeah, the standards.
Okay. And so what does that do to the text above in your memo?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing, but we could say, you know, in any, I don't think, I actually don't think there's a correlating, but there could be a correlating application material or something, you know, as corresponding one. Is anyone to ask you to describe those? I would just say in corresponding application material, if any, if you want to be. Or do you wanna look at it? I can pull it up too.
What's the question? We're looking at three oh five?
Yeah, just for your recommendation, are there, like, is there any, so if you strike that, is there anything else that just needs to be updated? And I just, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to answer that question right now.
Tackle that?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what I was. That's what I was, where my mind was going is just like you all just say, strike this and if there's any other corresponding edits. And it wouldn't just happen, like this will all be captured in a memo or, you know, however we capture what changes.
Yeah, and, uh, I mean, six through five, it's, you know, simply description. It's, it's all description.
Okay, and there is a corresponding edit to the other setback stuff, so maybe I actually should move this down. Okay, and then the activity notice for the, um, Department of Energy. I don't think we, we didn't spend a, a lot of time talking about that earlier. Oh yeah, I was supposed to look at the miner. Wait, look at that right now. So I think the miner has, miner must be under five acres. Minor exploration. Minor exploration involves less than five acres total surface disturbance. Or exploration involves two or fewer areas of surface disturbance that total less than one thousand six hundred square feet of disturbance.
Public or private?
Yeah, cuz the ex, the, might, your minor exploration, if you meet one or more of the following conditions. You want me to put it up there?
Yeah, so it says involves, yeah, two or fewer areas of surface disturbances per acre that each total less than one thousand six hundred square feet of disturbance. And then the exploration involves less than five acres of total surface disturbance. Um, so, um, you know, within that five acres, if I'm reading this correctly, Tori, um, you know, there could actually be ten disturbance areas. Um, total, um, you know, two per acre. And then, you know, each area would be sixteen hundred square feet less or, 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 or less. So, um, you could, you could be looking up to, um, you know, bit over a third of an acre, uh, total disturbance spread out over five acres.
But the exploration applications we've had in the last few years, some of them aren't much bigger than that.
Of the exploration act, uh, applications that we had, we looked at this several months ago and I wanna say that there was one that would have qualified under this. The others all had, uh, you know, they were all over a larger area or their disturbed areas for each pad was over sixteen hundred square feet. Um, or their total number of holes was, was larger.
I thought when we were talking about minor, we were talking about much smaller scale in terms of like the equipment used, the depth of the bore holes. I'm not sure, I want to start exempting the kind of things we've been seeing because again, it's like.
Well, no, there's only one out of.
But if they start breaking it up into smaller.
Well, in, uh, you know, if somebody starts parceling it up like that under cumulative impacts, we can say, nope, you've moved beyond this, uh, you're going up.
Yeah, and if they stay below that, that's, that's good for everybody, I would say too. It's like, that's actually an incentive for them, them to have less impacts.
We're not just saying notification, we're just saying administrative review.
I don't even remember. The reason we pulled this up, just to remind you, the reason we pulled it up is because we were seeing if there was something we wanted to borrow for the activity notice.
Yeah.
Minor.
So miners, I think, one step.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you're still seeing, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I guess what I, I'm getting things conflated, but what I'm trying to understand is there's this level of small level mining that one person might be doing that you say now at the state level requires just notification. But we still have a one step more onerous process and we are supposed to consider whether we wanna be in line with the new state.
Yeah, there are definitely comments asking me to think about that and that's the, so that's a reclamation only operation. So you're right, that, I mean, it, it's confusing. There's a lot of things out there. Reclamation only has to meet this definition that's displayed and it's less than five acres. But it has to be, you know, you can't be doing anything else, it's really only reclamation.
You were saying recreation, weren't you?
I guess I was confused about whether there was actually operation, yeah, right, okay. Reclamation only, the change at the state level.
That's the one that made this, this state level recommendation was a streamline, or sorry, the state law was a streamlined reclamation only system that just required notice for those types of projects.
That's also smallish scale or is this?
Smallish scale for reclamation only and I, we borrowed that definition so that we wouldn't be like differently categorizing reclamation only. But they, those projects also have to be under five acres.
And we are still requiring one step review for those projects.
And on the reclamation only, so the reasoning for the half acre is, you know, they come in with a program where they're out there, you know, doing as much work as their, um, you know, staff and funds will allow, um, and they're moving pretty quickly. Um, and, uh, you know, so they might be doing, you know, um, a small added here, um, small waste pile over there. Um, and, you know, like they said, you know, they're working on stuff that's less than a half acre.
So your thinking is back to the Department of Energy requesting
Yes.
A threshold for activity notice either.
And so that's what got us down this path. So are we going with five acres? Are we going sixteen hundred square feet per spot or are we going with half acre?
Um, so what, what, uh, the proposal is if it's under, um, a half acre, they don't necessarily have to notify us. Um, you know, would not, uh, um.
They need to do an activity notice unless it's, if the project's over half an acre or if they're hauling materials offsite, so that you all would receive notice if there's gonna be hauling of, of loads.
And then if they go over five acres, it goes into the review process.
So for reference, half an acre is just about twenty-two thousand square feet.
Yeah.
It's my yard.
Yeah, forty thousand square feet, but for exploration only, we've said sixteen hundred square feet, which is.
Sixteen hundred square feet per disturbed area, you know, so imagine all the drill paths that we get. Um, we've had some that have been under sixteen hundred square feet. We've typically had some that are more in the two thousand to three thousand square feet, uh, size.
Yeah, and that, that, that's, you know, number of surface disturbances was from something in D R M S that we spun off of.
So I'm hearing you like the half acre for red, for notice only from.
Um, for, for this one, yeah, the, um, activity notice for state or federal reclamation only operations. This will allow them to be nimble and, uh, do these small cleanups. Um, that are in the, you know, you know, they have nothing but public interest on.
You get notified just like the state does, but they don't have to come before us and do an application.
Only for, yeah, this is for state or federal reclamation only operations, which, yeah, which you can't really.
We'll get it sorted out eventually.
That was a lot, that was a lot.
That was a lot, okay. What else you got?
The qual, the water quality contaminants of concern piece, I think we were leaning towards getting rid of this additional application material, or we, I should say you all, but.
I like the first part. And then the rest of it, I think, could go.
Yeah, and to Jocelyn's point earlier, this is something that you all, you know, if there are contaminants of concern, you always ask the applicant.
Wanna see this kinda test.
Or you can ask them for the rationale of what types of testing they would provide and more documentation, yeah.
And I would say, I mean, the San Miguel Watership Coalition was totally spot on asking for acid, acid generation testing. It's just too specific for these regulations.
Yeah, and the balance of like what the county can or can't do, yeah, yeah, yeah. Which I, I mean, I, you know, you just heard us go through it, it's, it is really tough for everybody, yeah. Okay, but we liked that additional call out for the monitoring plan, sounded like. Okay, and then the other ones, I kinda look, look at these as more cleanup, but there's, this weed man, management was a, a cleanup and that was in the memo too, so folks have already seen that one. This, this terminology for the impact area. Referenced to Department of Energy and then, um, Hallie, do you wanna talk about this one?
Yeah, this was just from, um, mine waste, water and hazardous materials. We were talking about how you can't use hazardous waste um, for backfilling and I just also wanted to add for road construction or maintenance, because one thing that historically was done is, for example, tailings or mine waste was used to build roads all over communities. We don't, that's not done anymore, but let's just make sure that's really clear that that shouldn't be.
Yeah, we all remember the Umtor project in Grand Junction. Or those of us who are around here then.
Fill around the water mains until you're right.
Yeah, the water mains until you're. So, again, it's not best practice anymore, but let's just put, put a point on that.
So the public understands.
Don't run away too far. I hope we're close.
Okay. Here's the list that I have running.
I don't mean to confuse you, but I still think we were talking about two different things. The activity notice, size exemption, there was, you know, that's only to do with reclamation, but then we were talking about these smaller scale exploration.
So, yeah, we definitely are confusing the two, so, um, there is the minor exploration, which is two sites per acre, six, no more than six hundred square feet per unit or per site. Um, and over no more than five acres. Um, that is minor exploration that would go to the, uh, planning commission as a one step review. There is the, um, uh, the reclamation, um, that if it's, um, less than a half acre and being undertaken by a state or federal agency. Um, so like I said, these little spot cleanups.
Yeah, so. The, the only reason we went to that minor exploration threshold is because Hallie was thinking there might be something we wanted to borrow in there so we're not having so many different acreages.
Yeah.
So we looked at the miner to see, is there anything we wanna borrow? And I think, no, it, it, we, we went there too fast, I'm, yeah, yeah. But, but that's why we went there.
We're not trying to change any threshold. Exploration or actual mining, we're just looking at the reclamation piece to bring it in line with.
Activity notice for states' federal activities, yes, and we, we did go there really fast, so clearly lost.
So, under Mr. Steele's, um, uh, his comment submission of, of just yesterday.
About dredging and high banking.
Recreational?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I.
Yeah. So. I'm gonna put up the definitions where we have that. Anyway, I do think that if you, if you all, you know, I think that's an option for you all and we could look at, basically, um, his recommendation was very succinct. Let me get to the right definition, sorry. Yeah, in both exploration and we'll go to mining operations, but the end of it says this term does not include those activities that cause no or minimal surface disturbance such as. And that is borrowed from the casual use definition for the B L N. And that is borrowed from the casual use definition for the BLM. So for the BLM, those, those things are also exempt. Um, the, the DRMS has like something comparable, but it's, it was more convoluted. So we.
His specific use case, um, wouldn't meet that exemption because it was.
Currently. And so that was his point is I think I would have to get a full blown application. Exactly. Yeah.
I don't have that.
What?
Oh, there it is. Under explored. You're under explored. Oh, under.
Yeah, it's the definition of exploration. Um, and then, uh, you know, somewhat similar on, under, uh, the mining operations. But yeah, it's, it's pretty standard that, uh, you know, if you're doing the, the casual or recreational, um, mining, that it be non-motorized.
And so once we get a pump involved, we're no longer non-motorized. So the answer to him of this, on the basis of what we're reading, the answer would be, sorry, you can't do that.
Yeah.
Without a permit.
Yeah. And if you want to do, uh, you know, if you want to do that activity on, um, federal lands, the BLM has a form. It's about four pages long. Forest Service has a form, um, and that's how they're taking care of it.
How are we taking care of it? Well, don't leave the.
We have to get a permit.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Which is part of this balance of like, you know, not having eighteen different kinds of permits, but also.
That's where the planning directors have led you to wave.
Yeah. Yeah. The right side. Hopefully that's a mining operation that would still go through two step review. Yeah. So I mean, yeah, I don't think that's anyone's intent. I really don't.
Would you say that anything that meets the state requirement with that short form could be one step or could be administrative?
Those are actually federal.
Okay. But it's a specific short form.
So I guess where do we draw the line though? Right? We are not miners. And so this is exactly what they're saying. Why are we trying to regulate the technical aspect of it? So is a four inch dredge or should it be a six inch dredge? Or what about a two hundred horsepower pump versus one hundred horsepower? I don't know.
How about if you give us direction to investigate casual use as it applies to the exceptions?
Perfect. And so.
The night towards only requiring administrative review for uses that have been permitted by uses in this scale that have been permitted by the Feds.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Okay.
So you're going to look at.
State.
I don't know how many people.
Or is there a BLM guys?
Yeah, BLM enforcers.
Yeah, probably more than.
There's a lot of old timers out there to do it.
Yeah, it's probably more than you think.
Yeah, there's the both. You know, guys that do it.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Got a family member whose hobby is panning for gold on the weekends.
The BLM might even be able to tell us how many of these kind of notices they receive in a year or two. I don't.
This is a dying breed. So maybe in a few years, at this point.
At this point.
By the time the regs come into effect.
You could go mine with your phone now, so.
All right.
Okay.
Whether what we're asking them to look at. We think we need to see it again, or whether we ask the BOCC to look at these pieces.
Well, I think we've offered our direction. And we'll get a copy of what is submitted to the BOCC. And we can certainly attend the meeting.
Yeah.
And say that's.
As individuals, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if, if in the course of us, uh, updating this for the BOCC, we come across anything that's substantive, we'll advise you. And if it's super substantive, we'll bring it back.
Or we could suggest to the BOCC that they hold a work session.
Uh, we don't usually step out and hold work sessions in between hearings, but okay.
I think it's going to take them a little bit to get
Yeah.
their arms around this. It may take more than.
Yeah, this won't be as simple.
For them anywhere.
Who knows?
And should we be encouraging these folks to show up at the BOCC meeting as well?
Um, so yeah, we continue to accept, um, public comment. We don't have a scheduled date for the BOCC at this point. Once we have our updated draft, we'll update it on our website. Um, and it can go out to, um, our, you know, I can send it out, you know, notification that we've got the updated draft to our extensive email list. And, uh, you know, so there is a notification, an opportunity to comment and, uh, again, you know, written comments that are received or go into the packet. And, uh, anyway, we found the meetings and comment as well.
Matt, is there anything you want to throw in here?
It's still on there?
Yeah. He's still showing.
He's making a sandwich.
Yeah.
He's muted.
Nice.
We're in a case.
Okay.
See this.
All right.
So.
My opinion is we've beaten this horse for quite a while. We actually haven't made some.
I don't, I don't think that's the form of a motion.
I'm just giving you the general play of the land.
I see. Okay.
I have feelings.
Can you, whoever's running the screen, can you pull up the mountain?
You stop sharing, I start sharing.
I found it. I move to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners to amend the San Miguel County Land Use Code and adopt their regulations for mining, adding section six dash three to article six, natural resources, and make necessary amendments related to mining throughout the land use code based on the finding that the proposed amendment complies with the standards of the land use code, section five dash one eight zero two, land use code amendments, and are consistent with the land use code, section one dash four, purposes of the land use code and section two dash thirty five, mining and mineral processing operations. I further move that one, the amendment shall include all changes as proposed in the consultant's memo dated June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five in response to referral agency comments.
I would recommend just going with the second part of that. So track one.
Right. Strike one. And instead have further move that we list any other amendments to be forwarded to the BOCC. So.
We'll forward, uh, forward to the BOCC, the list of amendments as discussed here in today.
The list of amendments as discussed here and today. And to include new items that were not on the original list, but we have asked.
As submitted by consultant.
Explore.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I think you could also just do the list. And then, you know, you've directed us to make a staff recommendation if we see anything else. So I don't, I think you could just stick with the list. And we as staff can still recommend additional things to the.
So I bungled that, but the list as we have reviewed today in this meeting.
I think that's good.
So moved.
I'll say it, Matt.
Okay. Moved and seconded.
Sure. Of course, that is, yeah, I can do. Oh.
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Oh, there you are. Hey.
Hey, sorry about that. I was trying to unmute myself, but, um, wasn't able to do so. But yeah, I, I mean, I will vote in favor of that. And I, just to, to further kind of add some additional comments, striking the, the balance between, you know, regulation and, and mining, I think is something we're taking a close look at. Also wanted to add that mining in the West End, I think is very important. Um, it's hard to imagine a place that could use the economic boost more. Um, so I'd certainly want to make sure that what we're doing here doesn't preclude that. And on that note, I think the changes that we discussed here today and the changes that, uh, are going to be in front of the BOCC definitely are, are heading in the right direction there. I, I, uh, I think I, I don't view what we have here as, as a veto power. I think it's certainly something that we look at, just like we look at any other, you know, whether it's mining or any other uh, area that's regulated. And, and so I think, I think this is, uh, this is looking right. And, uh, I agree with the changes that were made here today. And I'm in favor of the motion.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Do you want to make a statement or just vote?
Um, I'll just vote aye.
Okay. Have an aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have a new proposed land use code. Um, want to thank you guys for hanging. It's helpful to have you here. It'll be helpful to talk to you afterwards. And we encourage you to continue to participate in the process and help us make it as good as we can make it. Okay. That's the conclusion. Anything in the way of adjournment? Dern. Thanks, guys.
You guys. Please.